Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Pearsall to be held today, Wednesday, September 12th. The time is 7:03. May I have a roll call, please?
Mary Moore.
Present.
Robert Linder.
Here.
Rich Dangus.
Here.
Brenda DeGing.
Here.
Vanessa Briscoe.
Yes.
We have a quorum. Please let us stand for our invocation.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for bringing us here this evening. I just pray that you be with us as we look over this budget and figure out how we're going to incorporate everything we need to into the coming year. God just guide us and direct us in everything we do. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never-ending justice for all.
Okay, we need to entertain a motion to open a council workshop, please. Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Mayor, so you guys still have the last version of the budgets that we presented to you, kind of where we were at with prior to EMS, final decision on insurance, and anything else that we were trying to look at. So, let me kind of tell you where we're at, based on what I know. From that point, the previous, I was attacking the head of the workshop, which everyone was, we were asked to go up for our meeting for insurance, to make sure that we got that out again and done. It was issued, they're due on the 17th, which is our final meeting. We did find out today that United Healthcare pulled their alternative bid, so the one that made the safety net, we had the $3,000 increase, lots of table. So, the close bid we had was $100,000, about $100,000 difference is what we had.
Jesus Christ.
So, we'll see what we get on that day. But we won't give those until the 17th. That's why it closes the best we can get, to make a final decision on insurance. The EMS contract, we had the joint meeting with Fairway County and with City of Billy. They did select an EMS provider this afternoon in their county commission meeting. We don't know the details of, they didn't, a lot of, a lot of CMS is the one that they selected, it's an agent that's approved out of Georgetown.
No more EMR?
No more EMR. Don't know what the final numbers were, and they're still trying to work out some of the details, but of course, we know that we're not going to be paying them for it back, unless we have leftover money or whatever that means. So, they can work out whatever details, we can work out that. The one thing we've been, we've brought this down, that they talked about, it requires, that contract requires an ambulance to be in Pearsall, an ambulance to be in Billy, and a standby case where those have to move to cover for the one. So, somebody does a transport, they have one to cover for the one, so they're doing that, so we don't have to worry about the EMS anymore. So, that's gone through our billing. So, based on the two budgets that we gave you before, the utility, the draft general fund budget, and the time that we left off with it, we had a surplus of $8,397.66. In the draft utility budget, we have a surplus of $10,144. So, we have a surplus of about $18,000 to deal with, to deal with the, whatever else comes up with the insurance, kind of clear on insurance, whatever else. So, really, what we need to see tonight, we should, we'll have some answers before the Monday night meeting, which is our schedule, is our scheduled budget meeting. We will have some answers, a lot of answers, I have proposals for insurance in front of us, so we know a number, we can figure out what we're going to do with insurance. And that's like, that's like the last real number that we need to be able to put in there quick.
For the Director, Councilwoman, Brenda Zerenuk. And Councilman, Vanessa Briscoe Ragel, time is 7:08.
So, we'll have those final numbers, but what, so really, what our, we're interested in, I would guess, I know you guys wanted to talk to the Directors, asking questions about, about what type of budgets those Directors are here, so you have the opportunity to do that. But then, anything else that you want to see, if there's something else you want to try to figure out, this would be the time to talk about, so we can have some conversation on that weekend, or try to figure out how to operate it from tonight, before we actually have our budget hearing, and try to look in and maybe propose to approve. So, kind of leaving it at that, we'll try to ask your questions. If you guys want to ask questions to the Directors, who are there here, if we have any other questions you want to have, we'll do those again, ask your questions, and listen to your concerns about what's in there, so we can try to iron those things out between now and then.
Madam Mayor, I applaud that, you made, could you zoom that up a little bit, to see what?
We haven't started with it yet.
We haven't looked at that yet?
Not really in details. He just put it up.
Well, I stood up there, this is the one that you guys have before. If you guys don't have your copies, I'll get Crystal to make copy.
I have, which?
It's version two, it's the last one that we talked about. It's version two, that was version two of the general fund. We also have version two of the utility fund, that was where we left off. You should have, on the front page, it should, on the front page, that it should show up, a surplus of $8,397.66, based on all of that. And the utility, which shows a surplus of $10,144.
Is it?
It's good.
Now, it was individual pages.
I've got, I got it.
Everybody not copying, or does anybody do? Hold on. I think, everybody's not?
I need one.
Oh, we need one. Let me have one, that's one.
I'm feeling tired.
Forget to take your business. You don't have? Do you have? Yeah.
Well, you guys want to talk to the Directors, you want to ask questions, whatever questions you guys have.
I'm getting too much feedback.
Whatever questions you guys have, we'll try to answer whatever questions, whatever concerns you have right away.
Actually, it's not for the supervisor at this point. My, my question against the one I questioned by Tom is, I don't think we have really decided on the 88 or 89, or we really didn't take a vote on what salary schedule, or, and I think that's, that's the elephant in the room right now, that we need to address that issue first. Either are we going to do an 88, we're going to do an 89, or what are we going to do, you know, regarding that?
Sure, it's your conversation, so you guys, we put the 88 in, originally, if you remember, we put the 89 in, and there was not that funding to do it, when we figured out that we weren't going to give the, the moral taxes from the annization areas this year. So, we dropped it back to the 88 plan, and that's what fit in there, so that's what we put in. If there's something else that you guys want to do, that's your decision, it's not my, not my decision.
I'd like to hear from, from the Directors, if they could, you know, their input into the budget process, and where they maybe need some money, not even money, things like that, maybe that'll help us figure out some things as well.
What would the time, or how do you organize?
Uh, well, I'm just a person.
I guess, the more, the more I have to answer, to answer my question, the raise, I just want to employ, so I've got the four. So, you know, it's, it's, that's the number one thing we're going to have, probably, you know, all the employees now, are they going to get a raise? So, I, I, I know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but it's not going to be able to get done without my employees. You know, and I think, I think I speak for myself, because in my department, I got all the young kids that are $10 back. So, one, like I said, I just lost one, I need to go to Toyota. So, yeah, and budget, yeah, of course, I hear every penny that I get, and then some on the budget. So, I think, I don't know what else, what questions you can.
What does your budget entail, sir? What is it going to cover? What is it for? And what do you objectives do have in on the floor of your department?
Basically, what we, what we do right now with the budget is just maintenance, upkeep. There is no capital improvement in it. So, it's just the maintenance of our apartment, and then just to keep, keep it, I mean, the apartment well, and for, of course, the employees.
Okay, and we heard that, that some of the monies don't come available until the sales tax comes in, kind of like in summer, or whatever. Do you have access to your, to money? How soon do you have access to money during the next fiscal?
Being, for so many years, we know that generally, we're not a lost spend, so maybe able, or made around that time. We can survive with the $200,000, or $300,000, or $500,000 that we can't stand to do now, when we're don't, use our, sorry, use our budget. The way I do it, in the, for so many years, I, I start stacking up on my, on my supplies, on this budget, before, before we end it. So, I'll have enough to survive the first month, two months, and three months in the next fiscal budget. Then, by that time, we should get the okay to start utilizing our budget. I can survive, believe me, I can survive. But I will not survive without, without any employees.
But you're not in full operation with your department until extra months.
Yes and no. Like I said, I do stock up enough on my, on my supplies. We can, will be functional, I mean, we won't be functional if I don't have any wood. But, you know, I'll have the material, I'll have the equipment, you know, with that supply. I mean, I do save up enough to start up the next one, the next year.
Is there more that you could do if we had more employees?
Of course, there is. I mean, like, right now, we're far away. The way I, I wanted to do it was to catch up on my department, whatever needs to be done, and then separate my employees, and send some to the street department, in order to catch up on the, on that part, that part. But the way it is right now, I mean, I'm having a full boss for you guys off the street department, and you can count that on the, on the part, so, you know, so it's, vice versa.
And how many employees at that $10 an hour rate, have, have you seen gone here in the last couple of years?
Eight, nine? The revolver door there.
So, there is a need to pay?
Oh, yes.
Two hours.
Oh, yes. It's, it's, it's not an easy job, it's not an easy job. You know, they, they, they work for their money. My guys work, you know, and that's, that's just another money provided, it's, it's possibly sometimes, maybe. You know, we're out there for, for, basically, our, our department is basically out there to weaken. You know, but eight, nine employees, they, they've gone through our, my department. And I'm down right now at four.
What is the ideal workforce in, in your department?
I, I was told years ago, in, in the determines on the amount of population that we have, I, I started with two, worked myself up to three, and then all of a sudden, I had five. I was built after the five. I could, I could use six, but I was happy with five. Four, if it really, really gets to the point that we're going to fall behind, I'll have to get in there and start more, and start doing whatever I got to get off of that. Or I can set forth with the street department, and, and knock those out, and then, and then I'll just say that.
So, if you were just, if you had the authority to grant an hourly for your workers, what would it be? An hourly wage?
I would say probably $11, $13.
Okay.
You know, there's no way we're going to compete with, with the outside forces, you know, the oil wells, or, or San Antonio, or, or something together. I don't want, this is, this is going to get dated, so go there.
I think the oil is really, the oil is level out at 14. They used to be 17, 18 back during the boom, but they really, since it started back up, I think it's between 14 and 16, depends on entry versus experience. So, 11 to 13.
Do you know what grounds and maintenance people make a penny?
No, no.
They make 14.
14 an hour.
Do you feel like you have enough input into the budget?
Yes.
So, you're satisfied with what?
I'm satisfied with the, with the actual budget, but I, like I said, I might tweak up that, that salary on, on the gas. Like I said, we need to give us all the men in the world to do what we've got to do with our employees, for backswing. And I said, these guys work hard, they work physically hard.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
No, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, you know, I do feel like the guys, yeah, they deserve more pay, because they, they are out there working. My thing is that, I mean, you do need more help as well, you know, and, and getting them around that pay rate, you know, with another helper, you know, is going to eliminate, you know. My thing is that I, I would agree more with giving the guys out in the streets more pay, you know, and hire more people to do, to do the work in the, you know, in the departments. And that's the way I see it. I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with giving the, the actual workers out there in the street more. I mean, I feel like they deserve it, yes, because they're out there working hard.
They deserve it, like I said, they haven't, I don't think they've had a raise in several years. You know, so their emotions go down, and, and it's, it's hard to ask for more from these guys when they're barely hanging on. I don't push them any more than, than I have.
Exactly, three years.
Because I feel that if I do that, they'll, they'll be gone.
Do you know if, if your employees, the field workers, the first year employee makes just as much as someone who's been in for four or five years?
Yes. We, we came across that problem, well, back then, when I was trying to look for a, a second, or my, a foreman, to help me out, and it came to the situation that it wasn't working out, because why am I going to take the responsibility of being a foreman and do more, and more responsibilities, when I'm giving $10 just saying that this guy worked? He's just a worker. So, it, it, it came up. That, that battle was, it brought up, and we actually simply fixed the problem.
So, getting us money in April or May, I think you said March, right? Getting that extra money, then, does it prevent you from doing things?
No, it won't prevent us from doing it. I mean, like I said, if we only have the salary, I mean, the employees are actually prevent us from not doing our, our, our stuff. Like I said, with just the maintenance equipment that you're needing, the supply, yeah, you need it. Oh, boy, but you're giving me right now the budget, what I'm asking for, put that way.
With the Pollo Patino Park getting renovated, is that going to have extra work to do?
Of course, it's going to be extra work. You know, that's why I, I wanted to be an administrative person to help me out, because it's going to take more, take work, more, more reservations, we got that home, we got a complex, and some of all the stuff that needs to be done. Of course, there's take work that I completely forget to turn into the city manager, you know, because I'm doing streets, and I'm doing the, the parks, and I'm doing something else, summer wreck and all that, so it, it, I do get overwhelmed. You know, so it, yeah, it would help, it'd be nice to have a secretary to help us out. And like I said, for me, these ladies up in, up here, they get, they're busy, but they still have, we are, my job too, as far as collecting permits, and fees, and so on and so forth, and getting situations that take care of for tournaments, so it's, it's a hassle.
So, would you say, given your guys $12 an hour, and maybe the lead guy $13 an hour, would that, would that suffice, or a supervisor would need?
I would go, I mean, if there was something, if I had the money, I'd give as much as I could.
Well, you can't do that.
I understand that.
If we're going to be competitive with the county?
The county is 14, so.
They can go from here to $10 over there, if there's a way. And that's, and that's what we've been having, people leaving the $10 jobs here, goes somewhere else.
The reality, the reality, we don't have people leaving the city going to work with the county. That happened a long time, that's not happening right now. They're leaving the city and going to work at San Antonio. And, and so, that's the whole reason we did the salary plan, is to be competitive with what they can get there. And that takes into account what their, what their qualifications are, what their requirements are, for the position, or the work focus on that position. And it takes into account the difference between somebody who is a gas department employee, who has to, to meet certain requirements with the Texas Railroad Commission, and somebody who does something else that may not have the same type of requirements. All right, this, this is, there's been millions of dollars spent on the science, and so that's why we use the science to try to make us competitive, that everyone else around us. We have two realities, that we're never going to get to the same place, you know, we brought up those numbers, and I can bring them up again. When you look at other cities that are our size with a similar tax base, they have twice as many employees. The reason that they're able to have twice as many employees as we do, is because they didn't have counsel in 2012, approved a bond payment of $750,000, without taking it to the, to the citizens, to be paid out of property tax, and put it on, on, on sales tax. So, $800,000, we could use to pay employees, or fundraisers, or whatever, right off the top of your spot. And it's not till 2028, or 2032, or something like that, we can't. All we can fix that is to try to put out a bond measure now, or hope out a refinance, I think we can refinance it probably for eight years. So, there, there really is no way for us to fix that. So, we have, we have limited pool of resources compared to everybody else that's our size, because the way things have been done in the past, we can't fix that. And so, we're trying to do what we can without limited pool of resources, and be competitive, and, and convince somebody that, yeah, St. Pierre Sol, we got 66 employees, instead of going to Pleasanton, was the same size as us, and has 124, and pays more. The only way we're going to keep them here, and keep them, is to be competitive with what they're paying on those other communities. That's what the whole salary study did, was look at all the communities and said, in that job, here's what they're going to pay in that job. So, that, this whole reason we laid it out, and, and it's across the board. I mean, we're, we're losing hourly employees, we're losing supervisors, because they have better opportunities, some place else, to be able to, to, to take care of the things they need to take care of for their families. So, that was the reason that we put that in, it wasn't just, we just throw a bunch of guards at the board and fix them up. I mean, there was a lot of work with that. So, if we're going to say, well, we're going to be competitive with the county on this one, but on this one, there's not equivalent with the county, so we can't be competitive. All we're going to do is end up with the same old we're in.
Well, it's up for discussion, that's what.
No, that's, that's what I'm making sure that we understand, that we're, we're not dealing with the same old chips everyone else is dealing with.
We understand that, but we're also dealing with the same economy that's been here for long, and still here. You know, we're, we're not growing economically, and so we can only afford what we can afford.
And the other cities too, like Pleasanton, I mean, they have a lot of, I mean, businesses out there too, you know, that they're bringing in.
Absolutely, because big, so the city councils at that time, they didn't run up Walmart, they didn't run up their businesses, they brought in, and they, 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 and we did. Our council that time chose to run up, and so we're, now, that's another part of the chips we're missing out on. Now, all our citizens go to the mine, go shopping at Walmart, instead of shopping at Walmart, it shouldn't have been here, and they go to the line, and go shopping at H2B, instead of shopping at the line, but H2B is sure to be here, and all that tax money goes up there.
One last thing I want to say is, you should see stack of work orders that I have. I just got some today. And I look at, what can I do? I, I only got three guys on, on that, on that street crew, to care, to take care of the whole entire city. By the time you get done, just on Oak Street, Comal, or Colorado needs to be redone again, and then plus we got alleys. Oh my God, I got alleys that, about that, that stack of, of work orders for alleys. And then that, now they're throwing in the waterways, you know, I, I, there's no way. I mean, I'm, I'm beating my head in the wall. I mean, I try to spread the guys out, I try to do the, the rightways Monday through Wednesday, and then spend Thursdays and Fridays just doing work orders. But still, I, I'll, we'll never, we'll never catch, we'll never catch them, it's impossible.
Are you in charge of parks, or parks and streets?
I do the, of course, I'm, I'm in charge of the parks, I do the rightways, and I do the alleys, and once in a while, I'll do the waterways.
So, again, what, what is the ideal that you need for your department, in order to, to, you know, to keep up?
I would say probably another two more, or three more employees in the parks, because it is increasing, and another two or three in the, in the rightway department.
And if you would advertise for $14 an hour, do you think you'd get some employees?
I'm sure we would, we'd get some bites, I guarantee you.
What are the waterways?
The ditches.
The drain.
It's the new theme park.
Three.
I'm in the same boat, same thing. Water, green water, all of the, the, on our side, we do the sacking, the valves, and any branches, the wind, and, and so, we got three guys do the sacking, and whatever goes through the street side. On the gas, we have three, three that, four, yeah, four. They do water, green water, and gas. Autumn, autumn, ice cream, and then the other, whatever comes up, on the daily basis, we try to get that done. Sometimes there's leaks that need to be done, and there's, we have a priority, we do those first, and we take it, while, to get them, so, and, and, I think they deserve, already know.
You have a total of how many? You have a total of how many in your department?
Six in gas, fifteen gas, six in water, five in water. We, we, we have, we have, we have, we have, six, five, and then, always, we have, so fifteen plus the transfer station, sixteen total.
Sixteen total.
Six, six in gas, five in water, five in four, this water on the transfer station, two is the four.
I have a question. Rudy, what would be ideal for your department? I mean, I know you probably have a skeleton crew at this point, but what would be the, the ideal situation for your department, in order to, to be efficient, to be out there, to be taking care of everything at least, to be taken care of, Rudy?
Three, three more, three or four more, or be ideal?
Three or four in each department, or all together?
All together.
Because they're all straight.
Break down?
And are you having the same problem as far as like keeping your guys or are you?
They, I'm a, we're being cheap enough, but the problem is that they, they, they've been, they're on this date.
Oh, yeah. Some major differences.
Whatever we can help a guy, whatever, the whole, probably a few.
Rudy, in your department as well, do you have the supplies needed to do your work, to do your job efficiently?
Yes, we, we do have, we, 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 we have more efficient parts and all that, we do have, have a part. If it's in the budget and things come up, we do, we can have a little budget, we have, we can provide for anybody.
How many CDL drivers we have? One or two, CDL? C D L?
There's one, most of my, all.
One in yours?
There's only one.
With Pearson or you have one as well?
One, one, one. That's the one that, that sweeper or, 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 I have to drive.
On the sweeper, what is that, a twenty-six thousand pound unit or?
It's all the twenty-six.
Is it twenty-six?
It requires, it requires CDL.
So any of your guys wanna go get, get, guess this license for CDL? I mean, is there anybody you can possibly promote in?
Yeah, we're working on that, in the mod, so they can get their CDL.
Would it be beneficial if there was like a little stipend for them to get their CDL or would that be an incentive?
It would, it would help if that's more than we can, we can get a CDL.
That, you would?
Yes.
So does the city pay for that to get the CDL?
Well, it depends. You know, that's one of the things, I mean, I don't wanna think it's gonna come up in this discussion about the stipends, but that's one of the things that we need to talk about is how those stipends, if you're gonna, if you're gonna pay for somebody to get the training, why are you paying for certification after you get trained? Then why a taxpayer to pay for that? So you have, you have people get certified on their own or they come certified, so then, yeah, but if you're paying a thousand dollars for somebody to get a certification, then why are you paying them extra after the dividend the taxpayer paid for them to do that training?
Yeah, and then, I mean, how do you ensure that they're gonna stay after?
So that's one of the things we gotta talk about, so what we started on, at the PD, we'll talk about this later, but at the PD, we're starting with PD is, is we're starting to require a contract, if we pay for them to enroll to a training, we'll require a contract that says, you're not gonna pay extra for them to stay here, at least two years after you're trained, pay us back.
See, that's what they did.
So maybe the same deal now, but that doesn't mean if we're gonna pay for them, it doesn't lead to a stipend, it leads to a requirement for them to stay on their work. If they don't, they pay us back for the training, that's not fair, because, think about, I mean, you think about this, well, everything along the way, if you pay for somebody to get a CDL and we're paying them twelve or thirteen dollars an hour, the next day they can walk across the street, pay twenty-four, what are they gonna do? They're gonna pay to get a CDL, you pay for it, they'll walk across the street, take another job, so that's, that's some of the things with those stipends that I'm talking about is if we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay for them to get those certifications, then they owe us, we don't owe them half these certifications.
Is that how Xavier's was handling?
Yeah.
Well, the stipend for him, he never got.
He never got certified?
No, he didn't, no, it was built in that he was to do that on his own and then he was gonna get additional funds afterward and he never got, so he never did this.
So we only approved last year's budget for two people to get those scholarships, training. Did that happen?
Well, yeah, so that's, that is, it's still a process because of the way the schedule works out. And he was part of that, so he had a repayment agreement when he left, the repayment agreement was sort of down on, after he already left as an employee, he's come down and worked basically, so that's motivation for the finish of other projects. The SEB plan that we just did, the wastewater treatment plan that we did that, basically we would've had two-year, whole employees to do, or we'd have to get a consultant to do or pay the engineering firm or something to do, he was capable of doing, we had him back with that agreement, and not get paid, we will seem to pay us back for what portion of this, so.
Rudy, at the transfer station, how many hours is it for now?
From one o'clock till four thirty, four forty-five, some, noon to Friday.
Three and a half times the battery from ten o'clock to two o'clock. Does that have these numbers?
From ten o'clock in the morning.
That's about eighteen hours, twenty hours.
Sixteen hours.
And we used to have a transfer station open four hours a week or at least thirty hours a week. And I know, I mean, I know what the rest of, but I've got, I've got some concerns brought up to me on the fact that it's not available, and mostly on salaries because that's when most people get up and try to do something on their house. So we could possibly use a full-time person there.
We have a full-time person there, I hold the position, we cut it a little bit last year, and we took a position, we had to call the board and split it, essentially to a utility loader and to keep that open. And part of, part of the problem with that was, our, our, our track rates, the difference in what we pay, what we charge was enough to fund that position, so we were paying for it out of, out of, basically the water park was paying for that position, so the gas park paying for it, because our fees would be charged for our solid service, we're covering that.
But it's a full-time position, but they're not open full-time.
Yeah, he works half-time in utilities now.
So it would benefit the community, be a greater service if we were open full-time.
But another thing, gas waters, we have loads, that's considered, because other twenty hours is working on gas waters.
Yeah, I understand that, but a full-time person there would benefit the community because that's what we have before.
Yes.
I, I, y'all, forgive me, I feel like I just need to stand up. I guess I wanna address the council and you guys here, I've had a privilege of serving here, I guess, for four years, and with you guys, four years and something, y'all, not quite that long, but this was my third plus budget and working with budget before and anyway, find that fun and exciting in a strange kinda way, but the topic right now is this, eighty-eight rate, and a couple of things that I've heard that I think is important that we think about is, we don't have the staff. We are, you know, to use that comment, the thing that I, that I think we get hung up on, well, this school, this district, I have more money than they have, they have more tax base, but looking at the reports that I've looked at, that talk about miles of pipe, miles of road, wastewater, you know, the ditches, the parks, the parks they have to do, we're comparable and we are, whatever we are, fifty, sixty percent of what they are. And then guys, looking at this budget, depending on where we sit, we've got maybe eight thousand extras, so the topic of conversation, I'm glad we have this, is the eighty-eight. Well, part of the reason that we got to a balanced budget where we are right now is because we said we're not gonna hire more people. Lord knows, we need more people, we need more people, but then if we hire them, we got guys out there ten hours an hour, so we're gonna bring them to fourteen, and that's not gonna work, you know, and so, looking at this, I've looked at this survey, and I'm familiar with salary surveys, and I know we've gone around, and I've kinda looked at the numbers, and right now by my calculation, we're at six, sixty-three percent of our employees are below eighty percent, sixty-three percent. And so, that and that figure roughly, what we looked at before, to get this eighty-eight, which is a benchmark, it costs us a hundred eighty-five thousand. You know, the last time we approved almost a million dollars for the lineup of things to fix things, to repair things, but, but we gotta look at the basics. If we don't have manpower, we're not gonna get there, we're not gonna be able to do that, and then we've got to get to an equitable situation, and what I would say is that, okay, we're not almahas, we're not even cash flow, but, but these figures, and I have all the cities that they are, but it's a thing of armor, it's an average of those, and so we're taking eighty percent of that, which is a twenty percent discount of what those others are. And the thing that I'm thinking about is, and I hear that, but it's a benchmark, but we just heard Randy today, he lost a guy at Toyota, and if he's making twelve beer and gets twenty at Toyota, that's a, that's a no-brainer. But we have to get to a spot that is equitable, and I think this is what makes so much sense. Now, the other thing that I wanna say too, from my perspective, is, and looking across here at the tenure of all you guys, and I know, you know, we all started at the bottom and worked our way up. If we go, I mean, everybody wants to pay everybody, you know, and the guy out there working, but I can attest, the guy at the top has a whole lot more stress than the guy at the bottom. And for that guy, all of us had aspirations of being that person someday, and so what is, what's, what's the hope, what's the dream if they see that guy not getting taken care of to the level that he should be? The, you know, I remember when I did blue collar work versus white collar work, the white collar work that I had with management facilities was way more tiresome, way more stressful than the blue collar. So I think, I think if we consider that, my perspective, that's a gross inequity to look at, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna discount these guys that are managing, that are, that have all this responsibility and not acknowledge their contribution to our city. And the importance of what we're doing, again, going and look at this, and these guys' input is critical, but it all ties to the budget, and so, I mean, every one of them needs more hands, every one of them needs more employees, we've got, we've made some great expenditures on some great equipment, but we don't have the manpower to run it, and it's, and guys, we're all in a tight spot because we heard the crowds last night saying, "Streets, streets, streets," well, it's, it's a madhouse, it's a madhouse of trying to get that done with the staff that we got, and so we gotta start somewhere. I believe, I believe this year is the year we're gonna turn the corner. A year ago last year, I said the same thing, I said, "Man, two thousand and eighteen, we're gonna turn the corner," but, but we all fought this fight together and we saw the things that happened, and here we are again in the zero-sum game with no good money to fall back on. And so, this, a hundred eighty-five thousand, you know, built into this budget where today we are in a thousand-dollar surplus, I think is the way to go for us to get to that point. All these things that we need to address, you know, if things work out, we've got plans for the third annexation, you know, what Keith said was, was perhaps we can get them to turn the game early, that might change things immediately this year, and then we can look at that, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, we can re-hire new employees, we can do the things we need to do to clean the streets, to run the sweeper, to run the passageway. So, so anyway, that, that, you know, I, I don't know where we wanna go with this, but, but I think this is the right way to start, a hundred eighty-five thousand, it's built in there, it shows our management that we appreciate you and we appreciate you, and, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know what else to do if we hire more people, I mean, we balance the budget, we weren't gonna hire more people, and we need it, but that was a decision that we made before, so. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to indulge my comments to you guys, but that is, that's just where I see it. Do you have any questions to me? If there's any question, I'll be answering.
Thank you.
I think all points are well taken, however, when we went through the ledger process last year and we had to go to the county and kind of beg for money, so we did it with the understanding, we cut a lot of personnel too, we did it with the understanding that as soon as we would get a little money somewhere down the road, we were going to be able to bring back some help, you know, and never were raises any part of that, okay? We're never part of that, raises came about here in June, okay? So this kinda, you know, in the big picture of things, you know, we've been sitting here on the council for four years, whatever, we, it's come up, okay? I, I don't know how, I mean, I know what you're saying, you'd rather just accrue budgets as it is, but, you know, we, we need to figure out how to keep those employees that are, that are leaving those ten-dollar jobs, okay? And if there's others that require or others that need to be upped, we'll, we'll look at that as well, okay? But just to accept that it is in the budget, it's, I mean, you know, we, it's something that's come up recently, it's like the HEB thing came up recently, and I understand, we have to be competitive with the market, but our market is not sherks, five miles, it's not those schools, I mean, those districts, cities that we're compared to. Our market pretty much is in this area, and I'd like to see what salaries are in this area.
And, and, well, they could, and guys, we could save a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and start it out, you know, I mean, and, and it's a, it's a council decision, but from my perspective, two, two points to that, it's, it's a hundred eighty-five thousand was very, very well spent, that's going to spring word up to the next level because it's gonna show our employees, it's gonna show our managers that we see the inequities that are here, that, that is a, B, the, and again, you know, Julian, and I guess we'll just agree and disagree, but it, I see it as a benchmark, and taking it as eighty percent, you know, it's a place to start, and I think it's an equitable place to start, but that's opinion that we could disagree.
I have a comment as well, I concur with, with you on, ever, I understand going with the eighty-eight, I understand it, I know they deserve it, however, that doesn't take care of the lack of manpower that these people need out there. You know, that doesn't take into account hiring more people for these people, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to a skeleton crew. What I may suggest is a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, let's hire some more employees, you know, and maybe those, those positions that serve as the community, like the streets, the, the groundskeepers and all that, maybe give them something equitable, more than ten dollars an hour, and still hire more hands for those areas. And in the future, look at the other positions regarding, regarding their salary, at this time, I don't think we're in any position to, to be doing that, because first of all, the insurance, we still, we still don't have solid numbers on the insurance as well. You know, we, we just went back to the county and said, "We don't have any money in our coffers to help you with the EMS service," so where does that lead us? How does that, I mean, how does that gonna stand with the community? We don't have any money, but we're giving, you know, the eighty-eight, you know? I'd much rather, much rather see people in the community be serviced, having more, more manpower where it's needed the most, you know? I don't think we need more supervisors, we need more, more hands for, for these people to do their work efficiently. That was one of my questions, I asked them, what is ideal for your department to, for you to be running efficiently? And they all said, "We need two or three, maybe four employees." If you take, if you take that into consideration, we're looking at maybe, I don't know, maybe about seventy, eighty thousand dollars?
Just so you know, thirteen dollars and fifty cents an hour, a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, they should buy a license.
And that's exactly what they need?
That's true, departments, we've got six more.
Well, yeah, I, that, thank you, and so certainly this is a, is a council decision.
Yeah, and the salary increase is part of this discussion, and we were wanting to hear from the department heads as to what their needs were and so forth, so we gotta figure it out, and we have to sit down and bear up everybody's needs.
We have to sit down and bear up everybody's needs and wants and whatever, and figure out what to clean away from what we have. We can't anticipate that we're gonna give that money down the road. We don't have that money. We hope to get it, we'll get it, and that's gonna be a great thing. But right now, we don't have that money. And I understand, and this was predicated on that we weren't gonna hire anymore. And so, that's what we'd always talked about at this point. And Lord knows from the very beginning, we need it, and that, I understand that. So, so again, I'll, I'll push up, that, that was my thought, was that, hey, we need best pay for the budget. Where we are at this particular time, you know, that other part, but you know, thank you.
I had to pass out some packets to the ones over here. So, you know, I have just two, let's not put two wrong blocks on it. First, I'll say that it's precarious for me because I agree that, that Ram and these guys deserve every deep, every penny you guys are willing to give them. I'm Ram's biggest fan. No matter what I need, I know I go Ram and he gets it done for me. Him and his guys, I mean, he be talking about alleys and all that stuff, but he, he, he cuts the dress with the PD, you know? I mean, he keeps our dress mowed and looking great. I just, I can't say the amount of work he does. No matter what it is, I just, I put the phone, he gets it done for me. And not just Ram, but Ram's the one that, that's always there for me. But all staff, all staff, everybody that I've been working here since, though I've been here since two thousand and four. And so I have great respect for, for everyone, from, from office staff to, to the street crews. But, you know, it's the street crews and the guys that I see out there in the sun that, that I really want to thank you because they, they deserve it, and you guys will really give it. But my, my point, I only have really two points that I just brought to you. As you see here on that first page is the Bureau of Justice Statistics, which is a branch of the DOJ. And, and it's just telling you the amount of officers needed for population standards. And so for a city, considering we're right about ten thousand or right under ten thousand, that's probably twenty officers. Right now, we're at fifteen officers. We were at seventeen plus an animal control officer before. We had to do away with some positions because of the budget problems, understandable at that time. So we have an officer that's doing animal control for us now. It hasn't worked out as good as I hoped it would, only because when we reduced staff, we required him to not only do animal control, but continue with his police duties, which are many, are many, very time-consuming. And we all chipped in with the animals. I picked up dogs myself, and I pick up dog dressed like this just because it needs to get done. The people don't care why, why, they just wanna know why the dog's not being picked up, why the dog's dog's not being dressed. So, we can't leave, we don't want any upset customers, you know? It's about customer service. So, I've gone and done it, I've gone and sprayed this dog, you know, blew back the kennel myself. My lieutenants have, captains have, we all have to get this job done. But it's, it's a lot of work. It's a real, it's a, it's a whole lot of work. And what I would ask is that, I mean, if you guys were able to allot me another person that you can say, you're dedicated to only animal control, that's all you're gonna have to do is animal control. One hundred percent of your time on shift is for that, kennels feeding, medicating the dogs. I mean, we're probably, we were spraying these days, Parco. I mean, we're having to spray down every day, we're having to repaint, we're having to spray out the DCs here. And I mean, it's, and we have cats, some cleaning litter boxes out. It's, it, I got, I don't know where my head on that. You know, I, I've, I've mentioned to a couple people, like, that's probably the most difficult task I've ever been given in my long enforcement career. You know, seventeen years that I've been doing this, that's probably the most difficult task I've ever been given to this animal control. So, I would like to, if I could, is kind of reduce his, uh, his duties as a full head and, and make somebody, maybe if you guys are really able to create that for me, where he doesn't do nothing but not have to worry about police calls, not have to worry about, right, if he's pulling, you know, traffic enforcement and that kind of stuff, but focus on animal control, only animal control. That also the DA's my office, yes, ma'am.
You mean the current one that's there, Gundada?
Yes, and we had two. We had Gundada and another one, and he just quit. He turned his stupid nose to going to sheriff's office. Because sheriff's office, he's not gonna have to catch the officer. He's gonna just be a police officer, and that's what he wanted to be. And, you know, I understand, and even Richie Gundada, he's, he's our current. He does it because he wanted a job, and he knew what he was getting into when he took the job. And he's done as good as he can. But he doesn't want the job. He wants to be a police officer, that's what he went to school for, that's what he got training for, and that's what he wants to be, yes, ma'am.
What, didn't the city have a animal control? Wasn't he?
We had animal control, one of the positions that was cutting the budget last year to balance the budget. And we took a code enforcement position and we had it reduced to the PD to be animal control. And there was supposed to be animal control and code enforcement.
The animal control was certified and everything for, to be, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that's what the city hired him for. Now we have officers that are trying to do what animal control's supposed to do. I mean, that doesn't mean.
The thing was that the animal control officer could not cite people officially, people and so forth. They had, I mean, they refused to sign the ticket, that was ended up. Now with a police officer, they're not one more quarter. Muslims aren't a ticket.
And we also, we had talked about having two of them. So it was gonna, I believe we were gonna go to nineteen in staff, seventeen, we're going to nineteen of all quarters. Because the one people I gave to create, that doesn't go to the, you know, statistical amounts of officers that are required in this type of population. So I'll go a quarter, and we weren't able to do it last minute, like I told you, we weren't able to do it, we had cut. And so we ended up trying to get it done. And that's what, I wanna make sure you guys understand, we're gonna get it done. We'll find a way to do it, if that's, if that's all we can do. But I'm just here to voice my opinions and my thoughts on it. I've seen, because it's been a year now that we've been trying to get this done. And, and we're completely reactive when, when it comes to animal control. In other words, when you call us, we'll go help you. But other than that, we're out there doing police work. So it, it's not getting people attention it needs. It's bad out there. There's a lot, there's dogs everywhere, you know, and they need to get done, they need to get done. My other, my, my next point of contention is just making sure, and I'm not sure what Keith's plans were on it, but just on the incentive pay. Some people call them stipends, but it's incentive pay is what we always have called it at the meeting. And you see what's required again, is either an intermediate license, equal, an advanced license, or a masterpiece officer license. And so what's in that package is just telling you what, what's required to obtain those licenses. For instance, intermediate, it would take minimum twelve hundred hours, plus that minimal four years of experience for an officer to obtain that. And I know a point we made, well, did the city pay for this training and now they're double paying? No, this is not that. This is, the officer do this on their own time, their own money. It's, it's, it's not required for them to get an intermediate license. They're not required. Once you're a basic police officer, that's all you need. You can be basic for the rest of your career, that's all you wanna be in life. But for those that don't, for an advanced license, takes twelve hundred hours and nine years of experience. So these aren't just some flash in the pan people that were saying, maybe here's more money, maybe here's more money. Just because, you know, a masterpiece officer, twenty years, fifteen years, the twenty-four hundred hours of education and training. You know, that, that's a long time. That's a long time to be a policeman. At fifteen years, you should know what you're doing, and the state recognizes that. Some of the other incentive pays that we get is shift differential for working night shift holidays. I don't know if you guys work overnight, but I did for many years. And it, it takes toll, it takes toll on you and your family and your children, your wife. It's, it's something that we're able, we're telling them, we're gonna give you an extra twenty dollars per check because you worked at night for life. You're stuck on nights for life. And so we say, here's an extra twenty dollar. The guys are grateful, the guys are grateful for it. We have bilingual incentive, if the officers are bilingual. That doesn't mean that, oh, I'm, I'm Hispanic, I can speak Spanish, so pay me. That means they've gone through state-certified training to obtain this. The state has said that they're, they've met every requirement the state has in being bilingual as it comes to law enforcement, for law enforcement purposes. The other one is canine incentive. Officer receives seventy-five dollars a check for canine. Now that is something that the city does pay for. They do pay for that here. However, that's, that incentive pay is not because I'm a canine now, but cool. It's because that, that officer takes the dog home, he lives with the dog, he has to feed the dog, buy food on his own, care for the, the dog on his own train with the dog and his time off. So we pay him an extra seventy-five dollars a check, saying, for that inconvenience, you're seventy-five bucks to, to house an animal. And that becomes part of the family, you know? And so, that's just the main points that I see. The rest is, is the tenure, you know? So we, I have officers here that are about the four-year mark, and they're striving, they, they can't wait to hit the five-year mark because they know in five years, they are gonna receive an extra fifty dollars a check, thirteen hundred dollars a year. And they're, they're itching for it. They remind me all the time, I just need another six months. I said, you all know, I just hit my, I just hit my anniversary, you know? And so here I come, Father Dean and Reuben and everybody's saying, this officer is, is marked and he wants some money. And, and it's a way of keeping them here, you know? We, we lost a couple here recently. One to the school, or we just lost one to the sheriff's office. Our pay is competitive, our pay's competitive already, you know? And as I've spoken to my guys, we would, we would much rather, at PD, and I can only speak for me and my guys, but we would much rather, we need the manpower at PD more than we would like now. My wife would kill me if I tell you, don't give me, don't give me a raise, you know? Don't give my guys money, I mean, I'll tear all the guys. But I have spoken to them, and they've all said that we'd rather get more officers and get a dedicated animal control so that we take that off of our plate. And when I say take it off, I mean just take it off of our daily duties. However, we, we still have Richie certified, paid certified, and we still supervise the interior civilian animal control. Also, Captain McGee has also received certification and supervised her animal control training. So we would still be managing it, we just wouldn't necessarily have to operate in the day-to-day quite as much as we are now. So, we had seventeen officers plus animal control before. Now you guys expanded our borders, you've taken in population, you've taken in business, you've essentially taken in more criminal activity for us to police and patrol. And I just ask that we get our, our people back. We need our manpower back by the PD. And again, like I said, I'm not saying don't give other departments the raises that they deserve at all, any of them. They deserve it, absolutely, but I'm just, I'm fighting for my department right now. So, that's all I have. Any questions?
Twenty fifteen, no, twenty sixteen is when you started, right? Twenty seventeen? When did you become chief?
Chief was official December sixteenth.
Twenty sixteen. Twenty sixteen, this is twenty eighteen. How many guys did you start with?
When I first started in the whole board, in two thousand and four.
That chief left behind, yes.
We had eight officers in two thousand and four.
No, 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 no.
And she's seventeen plus animal control.
I know you guys, I mean, do you, do you have a way to show us the productivity of twenty seventeen versus twenty eighteen far as the revenue that was brought in versus some kind of accountability?
Oh, I mean, I, I can't really talk on revenue.
Well, not revenue, but far as accountability officers.
I can tell you what the crime is. And I've, and I've done a PowerPoint for you folks in the past, but you guys appear just showing the downward trend and overall productivity. And I'll tell you, I've been here since the whole board, the county has, this, the crime rate has never been as low as it is right now. Now, I'm not saying that there is a deep, there is some deep still out there, there's still some drug activity throughout, you know? Absolutely, we, I'm not saying we wipe out drugs and we're superheroes. But it's definitely better than it's ever been. And we hope with getting our staff back, we can reduce the burden. I know it, I know it, I know we can, together.
So how many more officers do you need?
I would like twenty, of course.
Me, me.
Ideally, if I, if I had to say, you know, this is what, I mean, I would like to move up from where we were. We were at seventeen plus animal control, I'd like to have eighteen plus animal control. Eighteen police officers and one civilian animal control officer.
And you have fifteen now.
Fifteen. Well, we have sixteen, but one vacancy right now. So it would effectively, effectively create two positions, and an animal control position, if, if you so chose.
And again, as the chief said, we're, all the supervisors are one hundred percent okay with our department. Again, I can't speak for another department, once said they, they deserve it, but our department supervisors are okay not having those. This year, we would rather wait for that, or going to like a, you know, eighty-eight, ninety-nine, whatever, when the power plant money does come in and it is more beneficial for the city to wait till that point, till that may be a reality, than try and take that on, don't show us that.
You know, starting officers, you guys already have them at ninety percent of what's in my police.
That's something that's important to note, is when you look at the different departments, some our departments are ninety percent ready, some of our departments are a hundred percent ready, and we have departments that are seventy, at the seventy percent. That's why the disparity in the numbers in the plan, it's about getting everybody to be following.
Absolutely.
And my wife's a new valley, so I can say.
Yes, sir.
And that, that's exactly what, what I was trying to get at, that a few minutes ago regarding the service, the manpower. You know, I wanted to, to more, I mean, actually get more manpower at this point, not, I mean, you know, and maybe start thinking about the salary increases next year or next fiscal year. But, you know, however, given, you know, the, the guys at the grounds, the streets, and making something compatible, comparable for them, you know, starting at thirteen dollars, you know? But still giving them more manpower as well, you know?
You mean, starting now with them?
Exactly, with, with this particular budget, you know, giving them more manpower as well. So, how to say this?
If you differentiate between departments, that's, that's no different than what they did before. Some departments get more, some departments get less, and it's not about people. The reason that I brought this forward, what I did, was it was about equality across all departments. Try to be fair to everybody. That's, I mean, as, as a manager here, I'm saying, yeah, I want that department to get more, but I don't care about this department, I'm not doing my job. Because this should be about, we're, like, we're the only city around that doesn't have that equality across the board. So try and get equality across the board is very important for me. You know, we talked about that, if you look at, now, you gotta remember, an officer, that thirty-four thousand, don't cover that officer because they're at ninety percent or a hundred percent already. So now you have officers who we went from five to four positions to maybe four and a half or four because they, they hustle. Because they do get paid higher than those guys that are out there digging, taking pictures or whatever. So, when, you know, we, we cut ten positions last year. We did talk about that as soon as we had a chance to get through all this stuff, to try to get them back. Absolutely agree with that. If we put five positions in right now and we don't do something to address the salary inequities that we have, we're gonna lose fifteen good people to keep five people with no horses. That's my concern. It's already happening. Already losing people that have a lot of knowledge here and a lot of information about what happens in this town. They're already starting to do it. So, you know, I, I would rather have one person that knows their job well, that gets paid competitively so we don't lose them, than have five new ones that don't know their job well. Or have a bunch of new guys that don't, and all the supervisors decide they wanna do something else, and then you don't have that knowledge on what to do or how to do it or when to do it. I mean, it, it's, it's a mess, I get that.
It is gonna be hard. Because you, you heard it last night from a gentleman in the audience, we heard it the other night from Judge Reuben as well. People pointing the finger at, at the city and at us to say, what have you all really done? I don't see any changes. You know, we, we are either not doing a good job of promoting ourselves and what we do to the community. Because I hear a lot too, what have you all really done?
I hear just that.
We know we've done a lot, we know we've done a lot, but it's not getting out to the folks out there, you know? You heard it last night, we heard it the other night, with Judge Reuben, how are we gonna balance all this so that we can have, uh, the public view what we're doing as being productive? You know? It's just, it, it would be great to have money for everything and hire more people and hire, uh, give everybody more raises and everything, but, you know, I, I think what we're saying, some of us is, look, maybe what we can do now is a certain part of this, and then as money goes in, just, just take care of everybody else that needs to be taken care of, until we get everybody up to eighty of us, you know? I mean, we waited long enough, I mean, it, it hasn't been fair, it's not fair, we know we have to fight for it. It's not that we don't wanna make it fair, we, we like it, but we just don't have it right now. But, my biggest concern is to hear those comments from, from community members, you know, prominent community members at, at times make those comments, "I don't see any changes out of what's going on." We're just not doing a good enough job, I think, at the council, or whatever, to, to get the word out, of all that we're doing, um, because we do hear it. Um, and, and, and you know, you may, you may, you may, you may relate to your community, your community may be some, uh, small portion of the big community, uh, and there's your community, your personal community may know that, but the community as large as this town does not understand everything the city is trying to do. We've had a lot of meetings, we've had a lot of business meetings, and a lot of downtown meetings, a lot of partying and stuff, it's just not getting out to the general public for some reason. So, with that all, with all that annoying, it's like, you know, we have to, in my opinion, we're gonna have to strike a balance between what we'd like to do, and what needs to be done at this point. Keep it in mind, what has to get done eventually. The overall goal is to have competitive salaries so that we can keep employees, or get, get qualified employees as well. Uh, we just don't have it all right now.
Ben, Mr. Mayor?
So if we started with the lowest hourly employee, um, for, of course, we have to amend the budget if we did this quarterly, right? That's what I'm trying to say, we have to amend the budget, say, we did the, the ten dollars an hour, which is your lowest pay, isn't it?
Well, there's just a few that's involved, aren't there?
Yeah. So, so all of the guys on the street, they make different salaries? Okay.
Oh, they're all like, "Yeah, they're all the officers."
Okay, I got you. I'm thinking it would just cross the board, ten dollars, and that ain't gonna work there. Okay, Ben, maybe you have a suggestion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd be curious to hear what you, your, your, you know, think on the big picture.
Well, I, I, I guess, and I see a lot of people from all socioeconomic, uh, because they come through the clinic. I hear a lot more positive than I do negative, but I'm not out there, you know, in restaurants where people just like to sit around and talk about nothing. And, um, we, oh, seriously, I'm sorry. No, it's, it's, they're just, you know, just conversation. So, but the patients, you know, basically, I hear people randomly just walk up, "You guys are doing a great job, we know it's difficult." I hear that, I'm, I'm not discouraged, because everybody doesn't think we're doing a good job. We know we're doing a good job. Now, could we do better in PR? Yes, getting it out and doing things, but we've, we've tried, newsletters became very expensive, we've invited people, this, this, this town has such a, I say this without getting in trouble, they're so accustomed to not, anyone not doing anything, it's difficult to understand when we are doing things.
Yeah, but I think the point of reference there is that there are things that are being done to the city, you know, the lightest are being done, I, I hear that from some of the citizens too, but there's a lot of people here, like more than ten thousand people, so a lot of people don't see that necessarily, a lot of people feel like, okay, why is the counter station now close half the time, or, you know, do I have more people on the streets, uh, what's been done? I think, I think that's, that's what they're referring to, in some cases, is that we're under staff possibly, and from, hearing from directors, and we are under staff. This is a big town, it's, it's, it's not defined, it's not, these little towns are not as, the town is, it requires a lot more people, okay? And so, I think that's where most of the comments are coming from, because that, you know, what have y'all really done? They just don't see it. You know, they don't see that the wastewater plant is now working much better, they don't see that a lot of the negotiations that have been done, that, that thing that's done with renewable gas and all these other things, I mean, to correct the problems of the past, there's been a lot that is done to the city, and, uh, like, in the past, and we're, we're having to deal with our professions, we're having to deal with all of it. My position is really just, let's see what we can do with what we've got, and if we can't do eighty for everybody, let's see how much is gonna be, and then figure out how we can eventually catch people up. Um, and I won't mention salary scale, you know, like that, but eventually, you know, what the chief was referring to in all his stipends and years of experience, that, that if built into a salary scale, and, and with a salary scale in place, you pretty much know coming in what you're gonna make, depending on your years of experience, et cetera, certification is crucial. Um, but, I, I, I mean, I, I hear a lot of things out, because I am about, I'm about, and I'm not just a restaurant.
Yes, sir.
It's frustrating, because it's like, they want more things done, the streets, they want more things done, clean up the town, you guys said you're gonna clean up the town, it's still not clean, you know? I mean, it is getting better.
And, I mean, it was like stagnant for twenty years?
Right.
And nobody complained?
And that's why I said we have to strike, we don't complain, we just gotta complain in the past. We just have to strike a balance between what we have, what we like to do, what we need to do to keep those, uh, ten dollar, uh, ten dollars an hour employees, uh, and maybe start working towards getting everybody else up somehow.
Is that doable?
And, I mean, we're not gonna get more services out there as we give more hands, by my, and, and that's the number one complaint. I talked to a lot of people in this last campaign, they're, they're just, uh, they want more done, basically, and we're not gonna get more done, we're increasing it out in the field. And so it's, it's, if you catch twenty-two, you, you, you pay the raises, and not get more employees, or, or, or you do a combination of those, and then-
Work our way out.
Work our way out.
Well, for me, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm just so torn too, I mean, I see what you're saying, Ben, and, and, because I mean, I know, um, with Ray, like, when he was, um, with the police department, and he was right under the chief, and you were third, you know, being a supervisor, there's so much stress, there's so much stress. But then I've had my son too, who was here working, you know, right before I started, uh, that I got on the council, and he was out there, you know, working for the parks, and he was out there in the middle of summer, busting his butt and sweating, and, so, I mean, I don't know, and there's, I just have this thing for the police department, because I've seen Ray, when he was with the police department, and he started at the bottom too, where he was patrolling nights, and, um, he would be, he would be working, and of course, being the wife, you don't really sleep, because you know he's out there, and you don't know what's gonna happen, and then I've seen him when he was supervising, and he wasn't sleeping then either, because he would be getting calls all the time, all the time, and he'd have to get up and get dressed, and, I mean, I, I hear everybody too, but at the same time, I know what it is to be a police officer's wife, I know what it is to sit there and be thinking, is my husband coming home tonight? You know, is he gonna get through whatever it is that's going on? So, I mean, I'm so torn, I, I mean, I wish that we could just give everybody what they want, and pay everybody what they should earn, we just can't do it. I just, I, at this point, I don't know. I, I don't know what to do. Um, I don't know, but, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Ben, and then I hear what these guys are saying, and it's, it's hard, so, I wish I had an answer, but I don't. So. Okay. And I do wanna add too, that my family, meaning my husband and my children, are the hardest on me, about why isn't this getting done, and why isn't that getting done, and it's like, you know, well, didn't y'all just buy this machine, why isn't it out there? Well, it's, you know, kinda hard when we don't have enough people to be running those new fancy machines that we have, but, uh, you know, I, I don't get out easy with just, with just my husband and my kids. Even my nine-year-old grandson is like, "Mom, I thought y'all were gonna clean up here some." So, I forgot to add that one. So you saw it?
Well, me, I mean, you know, me being in here, but seeing the previous, you know, things going on in the past and stuff, as me, you know, being appoint, not appointed, but elected here as a council, um, you know, it is, I mean, we do get the feedback, you know, we hear it, you know, all the time, you know, even when I wasn't, you know, it was, it was always there, you know, just like, you know, my son too was a cop here before, there was only eight of them back then, you know, he had to work double shifts sometimes, you know, and, and it was hard, it was, it was, it was stressful as well. Me too, you know, as a parent, just like Brenda has a wife or anybody, you know, we worry, you know, and, and I get with, with, you know, police officers are coming from, you know, I, I, I understand. I mean, to me, the way I see it, you know, you're going to be a cop, you're not going to be trained to be a dog catcher, come on, but if that's what needs to be done, then, you know, I, I get, you know, I understand where it's coming from and stuff, I mean, I, I, I see that. Now, the guys, you know, on the street, I understand, you know, I, I understand with, you know, Mr. Briscoe, and of course, you know, Julian too as well, you know, they're hard, they're working out their heart, I mean, and it's, and it's hot, it's, it's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we, and we do need the manpower out here, we do need it, I mean, we, it's, just like Brenda says, you know, the city bought so much stuff, you know, why are they even not using it? PD bought stuff, you know, that, uh, truck too that they have back there that's just parked there, you know, they, they're not using it, you know, and I, I, I don't, the, the, which is that one, Peter, that y'all have back there, the PD?
I'm sorry?
The tank?
The what?
That, that black tank y'all have back there?
Uh-huh.
You, you all have it?
Oh, oh, that's not ours, that's, that's the school district.
Oh, I thought it was yours.
Yeah, it's the market.
Oh, okay, no, I, I figured, you know, I had it.
Well, we can use it, they, they said that it's like it's ours, we can use it there for us.
Yeah, well, I mean, my, my, my thing is that, you know, it's just, I wish we could have money to get what these people need, you know, they, they, they need to be, you know, in compliance with, you know, their work, you know, they have to have the proper tools to get stuff done as well. I mean, I'm in the property management, you know, I, I do property management, and right now it's just me managing four hundred units, because the company is selling, and they don't wanna hire anybody right now. I have two staff members, two maintenance guys, working three properties, you know, how do you think they are right now? I mean, and, and it's not fair, it's not fair to us, you know, to me either, but I, I see where they're coming from, you know, they need the manpower, and I think, you know, the, the street workers, you know, should, should get more money, you know, a little increase on that pay, because they are, you know, busting out there, they are doing their job, and we don't want to have them, you know, like they say, you know, quit and go somewhere else, you know, when we already have them here. I mean, I, I, I mean, I agree with, you know, starting with some things with them and then move up, you know, throughout, as soon as we get that money, and from the taxes, and work from there and work up, because everybody deserves a raise, they do.
Damon?
This reminds me of being in my own office, to be perfectly honest, because I'm not that, I love my work, just like you guys are, uh, and one thing I've always espoused to whoever, whoever works for me, I'm gonna ask you to do something, I'm not gonna do it myself. Hospital lighting, fashion, fixing a tower that was down, as a network admin, that's not really my job, but right now I'm under staff, so I'll do it. So I appreciate what Ranger said, he gets out there and over, and gets the job done when it needs to be done. That's, in my view, that's true leadership, is out in front, not behind. Uh, so I want, I want to say that first. Uh, second, I'm sitting here listening to everyone, and I can't come up with anything that's a good solution, a perfect solution, in my mind, because as an employer, I have a sense of struggles, I can't hire anybody ten dollars an hour. In my line of work, I can't hire, hardly hire anybody at fifteen. So, I understand the struggle, but need to get through wage hire, but I'm also, excuse me, also in the both, you know, uh, I just need to have more people with the budget The inequity of, of the pace scale spouts me in, because that's something that I've always strived for in my own businesses, is equity, and, and based upon merit, not on who you are, or who you know, or anything else, that, that's, I don't wanna stop at eighty, and I don't think anybody here does either, I want us to be ninety, ninety-five. I want us to be right there with everybody else, but the reality is, we can't right now. What I would like to do is try to strike a balance, see where we can get, uh, positions that we are not being able to find, be able to hire, at the pay rate we have, maybe increase those right now. Uh, but- But... Pay rate across the board, I don't know if we can see, if we can just do that.
If we were to get...
I'm assuming these numbers may do what I want them to do in my head, but they're just not working out. What's... John has some numbers here, so... Correct me if I'm wrong. Basically, what we'd like to see is another three positions in parks, three positions in public works and three police officers slash control, right? Is that...
That's what matters so far. We still have more graphics.
We still have more graphics, yeah. There's no way we can come close to that with money we have.
Well, and keep it in mind too. So, let's say you decided you wanted to hire three more parks and you wanted to do it at 1350. You got to call Russell's employees at 1350, sure you're willing. If you got employees making $10 an hour and you open up jobs at 1350 to come in and they're gonna have to train them, then you're not gonna keep those employees either. So, that whole department's gonna have to be pulled up before you put those positions in at the rate that you want to put in.
So, we got, how many employees do we have on our national management? I see this list here, but from what you're telling me, there's a lot more positions on this list than what we actually are hiring. So, where are the real numbers?
So, on that, on this sheet up here, this is the hourly. So, any of them that say 280 or $10 an hour?
Right.
So, there's one there, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. 12. It looks like 12 out of the 41 per hour employees, or 50 hours, but...
About 12. 12 salaries that have to go up in order to hire a high wage?
Well, yeah, they're, I mean, those are across different departments.
Right.
So, you could say, well, we're gonna do the parts department and that's all we're gonna do. I have, that's...
This is crazy. It doesn't matter what department, the top's gonna be...
When you look, if you look there, the majority of those salaries are at that range at the first part.
Right, right. That's what I'm seeing as well.
Raise your hand. Could you raise your hand?
So, we're looking at an inquiry, just to increase a dollar an hour, we're looking at going from, what is that? 2800 to 22880 is, would be a lot of dollars an hour to get that number to you.
Yeah, to do it, all in all, those employees are about $25,000. But then you increase your taxes, your insurance, your all that, so it's probably closer.
Closer to 30?
Another, yeah, another 9% on top of that, about. Also, so probably 27 or 28.
Okay, so we're looking at, let's say, some of that, $28,000 just to get those positions up to the mar...
That would get up to 11.
And then, we're working with, what, 185 that this plan right now is?
In any plan, the total cost of that plan's about 185,000, or sets split, that's part of that's utility and part of that's...
Right. Okay. Okay, so we're looking at about... So, how many positions would that add $11 an hour where we got 100 positions?
The insurance, at this point? How does it start?
No, did the, did the... What is the city pay? 80, 20, 80% of the...
No, 100%.
Oh, 100%.
100%.
We got five.
Yes, Robert?
What other departments are lacking here today? Are they all here this week?
Uh, Mr. Roble is not available. He's not here, but he does have his...
Finance is here.
My HR is not here yet, but he's...
HR is HR by himself. Let's...
So, can we, if we had the departments? Finish your end of the department.
Okay, my department is more or less a one-man department for now. And I was just discussing with Mrs. Jackson. The work I'm currently tasked with the comprehensive plan, if I don't get a list to staff members, that plan is gonna be a document that is not effective. Because a comprehensive plan is just policy document. You need a code compliance officer to bring it to life. Most cities that are small, that code compliance officer is also the animal control person. Now, a code compliance officer, I am also a certified code compliance officer. So, I know through our training, we can give, like, you know, citations, you know, we can bring matters off the record in this department. So, in terms of the legal market, we can affect some things in terms of the cost. So, a code compliance officer is highly needed. When I came here, I knew the special in the city, it was named. So, I was looking at a social where I would get a grant just to get a code compliance officer and a planning technician. Those two officers are very key. Right now, the comprehensive plan, you can't even do it alone, but I'm doing it alone. It's gonna take me a lot longer. Now, my job is not just comprehensive planning. Planning and community development is actually two departments in one. And then I'm making an economic development. The planning section is this plan I'm doing. The community development is what the city sees. Clean neighborhoods, the code being enforced, is someone being a nuisance somewhere. That's the community development aspect. And I have to answer to all those, and of course, the permits, you know, regime, when they come to building permits. Many times, I'm there trying to craft out, I just finish with the community survey. It took me a long time to make it very comprehensive. But there I am in the office, trying to think out what and what I would ask the community. People will always come, they want CFO, they want building permits, they've come to complain. And that also impacts negatively on the city, on the council, managers, generally. Because when they complain and people don't answer that in right away, they say, "We're not doing anything." And I don't like it. You know, when I drive out, the glasses are so high these days. I just talked with Mrs. Jackson, we're about to order some stakes, something that I use in notifying violators that their reads are hard. You know, we don't have that here. I actually really want to start on a clean neighborhood movement. It wouldn't cost us a lot of money, but the citizens will see that something is happening. If people are trimming, and I don't want to come on the approach of regulation, you know, which is why most anti-violent city employees. I want to come on the approach of delivery. We're coming to deliver a clean PSO so that people will be in a hurry to join the bandwagon and make sure everywhere is clean. But I'll need a hand to do that. I'll need someone to do that. What we really need here, in my opinion, is strategic planning. Just like council member, Gail and saying, you know, and the council manager, that they are so, they can't really say anything because it's like two sides. You're looking at retention, you're looking at development. You know, staff development, staff retention. Those two are very, they are the same ways. You cannot leave one. So, we need to really see how to plan and carry both of them together. Because the city is in such a situation where the customers are not happy with what's happened. Oftentimes, I'll come to talk to some old folks, I pay my taxes, nothing is being done because they don't get that instant response, okay? But they can't get the instant, even that response can be tailored. It doesn't really have to be instant. I mean, I know how I can do it. You complain to me, my neighbor is cooking tacos, food everywhere. I'll apologize, I'll say, "I'll get right to it." I'll shoot you a letter to acknowledge the complaint. In your mindset, oh, they are doing something. I will shoot the violator a letter, "Here, see what's happening. I give you 10 days, okay?" Now, these are just the nitty-gritty of current planning that we do. What I'm doing, economic development, I'm not talking about economic development, which is key. I could forward a budget. I was beginning to think that maybe because of the situation, the city is trivializing the comprehensive plan aspect. That comprehensive plan costs a lot of money. We need GIS equipment. You may understand more what I'm talking about. It's crucial for us to do something and do it correctly, you know. That GIS equipment, one of the quotes is like $40,000, $39,000 actually, you know. It's not sufficing in the budget that you guys are working on. But I'm not complaining. I'm a positive thinker. I'm actually hoping that one day, there's what they call planning grants, that I will try and see if we can get to alleviate some of these things. But right now, there is need for me to have, you know, at least a code enforcement officer and a planning assistant who will be taking care of this building permit applications because quite frankly, the ladies here at the counter, they are also overworked. I have already seen it. They are hiring, sometimes someone will go for lunch. You know, they have to juggle to see who is gonna be here to receive. And the citizens bring money, they pay the utility fees, so they actually bring revenue to the city. So, we need to make sure people are here to take their money from them, you know. So, it's something that we need to look towards doing if we have to narrow the scope. But one thing I can say is the 80-80 plan, Mr. Jackson is suggesting, is just establishing the baseline because it's not increasing. A lot of people are looking at it as increment. I looked at that spreadsheet. Some people are above the 80-80 already, so they will come down to the 80-80. While others, that the low will come up. So, it's establishing a baseline. It's not really an increase. I mean, the increase is marginal because the way we explained it some meetings ago, you know, some people will have to come down and some others will have to come up. I'm not even talking about, my own salary is like a part of the hourly bill, if you equate it in terms of hours. I'm not even talking about it. But that's the situation my department is, I really need help with some of the things that I want to use to try and get the city clean. My department and Rui's department, public works, they are the two departments that are immediately felt by the city on a day-to-day basis. The streets, the neighborhood cleanliness, you know, and generally nuisance levels. Of course, you can never run away from the police. But these two departments are more like the face of the city because planning and zoning, people will always come to me, you know, or whoever is my staff. So, it's an important department. It's not a department that should be trivialized. I just want to bring it to notice of the council that it's something that we need to look towards trying to ameliorate. The economic development is also another one that it bothers me too because one of the reasons why nothing has actually happened positively in that realm is we are also giving into mediocrity, we are handicapped, we can't, I can't actually go out. Promotion is one key thing I would have done to try and get people to look into PSO, to look towards even establishing a business. Promotion costs money, you know. There is money in the budget for, for, what do they call it? Meetings and, you know, meetings. I think that's how they put it in the budget. I put it at promotion for economic development, you know. So, but the meetings, we have other meetings that we have organized here. We brought the small and business, small business administration to do a workshop. But what I'm actually talking about is meeting with some of these corporations or businesses that are not local, that I want them to come down here. It may involve me actually going down to them. There is one in Dallas, early in Dallas, that I told Mr. Jackson. But I know why it hasn't progressed because we are short of funds, you know, and I don't blame Mr. Jackson. You know, for me to set out there, but I know I'm blessed with presence. If I come to your office and talk to you about something, as opposed to my writing to that email, you will listen to me better when you're seeing me face to face. If I write to you, first of all, looking at my name in the email, you don't know whether it's a fictitious guy or a scam, you know, so you trivialize the email. But when I come to you, you know, you will listen. I would have gone there if I had my own funds. That's the way I, that's the passion I feel about PSO. I would have been doing a lot more things with my own funds, knowing that I'm looking at the bigger picture, you know. But I'm actually handicapped myself. I can't do most of these things. So, at the risk of taking more of your time, I just want you guys to look towards seeing how to establish the baseline because anybody that we'll bring in, because we need manpower, you guys, anybody that we'll bring in will just take a cue on what is established already. That's my own spirit.
TJ, just to make sure, would you have, I heard you correctly, and no one's gonna get a pay cut?
No.
Okay.
No, what we talked about was it's a regressive plan because if somebody is above that 80% and they gets a position, then the position rolls back. It's hard to roll back to that baseline, sorry. So, anybody that's above it, if they leave, it'll be salary change, it'll come back down, come back down as well, but nobody will take it.
Yes, sir.
TJ, what in the budget is for your department other than salary?
What, what?
What amount is in the budget for your department other than salary?
I haven't been given the document, but I don't know. I have some document for... It is 140...
How much is the balance?
12, it's almost 12, so...
What do you have with you? How much?
On the proposed side, 28,290. The bottom line there is 78,948. The bottom line there is seventy eight thousand, nine hundred forty and eighty cents. What page is that on?
Thank you.
What page?
Ninety three ninety nine.
Is that telling you what is all of that money for?
It's the city, it's the time water table. Um, so probably utilities for the city.
So that's where it's historically been that we want to grab the forty line out of the unit door. And there's also in on page four, under services, the administration department, there's fifty thousand dollars in there for a masterclass.
Stan allotted, you say?
Yeah.
Page one?
Oh, page four, line number three oh six.
So you don't you don't keep all the utilities under one general ledger?
We we, well, we split between utilities and general funds. We can't keep one on because, um, it's paid out by the departments. So because some of us pay for utilities out of revenue utilities, some of us pay for revenue. Where's the next one? Where's the slogan?
No, I just, we need to, you know, what? I just want to let you know, well, he asked us then to, what kind of money does he have? A fifteen thousand master plan?
Okay, so then, so on page four, so on page ninety?
So where is that fifteen thousand under page four?
Page four.
Master plan.
So then on page ninety, everything that supplies and services would be the rest of the basic, supply service payments, the legal operating, that stuff right there. Ten for operating, so do you operate supplies in the department?
Lupin oil? Oil?
The truck that you used?
It's a white truck.
So like one.
Oh.
So could that fifteen thousand be on here or is there a reason why it doesn't?
Fifteen thousand, yeah.
Next, thank you.
Want you to go next. If you're memorying on this, then this is a different.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
If you got one, you're right.
No.
Get to what?
No. Hot taxes because of the.
Hot taxes.
Yeah.
Some of the main street, but I mean, with this budget, it will be my first budget line. So I don't have any budget right now. Um, the main thing that will be on mine will be the revitalization fund, where we can do the PSO grants and different things like that that we've talked about before. Um, that's the major thing that we have on the main street. And that's on page five.
So remember, we talked about this when we knew the draft, we think, um, we can't change the department titles in our software until after October. So this administrative fund, if you're in classroom, it's like all split up. We put it all together and wanted that. So so if you look at the budget numbers for under that administrative fund for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, national budget, because we moved it all over to the administration stuff. It was basically one budget for administration and one for the other stuff that happened here in the middle. So since we have that blank area, that we're going to make sure we put it inside of that blank form. So it says administrative department, administration department now, it's actually made sure we'll be able to change it after October. We put it in there now, it's in us in the whole, our whole report position.
Okay. Josie?
Okay, so I have.
Wait, one second, Josie, let me, let me.
I just wanted to make a comment. I just didn't know the council was taking into consideration. I've been here going on two years. From a perspective of an outsider coming in, the town was dirty when I got here. You know, the streets were dirty, it looked rundown, it needed a lot of work. We'll all agree, this is a different town. The atmosphere is different. The one thing that hasn't started taking a tick up since I've been here is the morale of staff per se, especially those who are making this ten dollars an hour and so forth. And the thing that I've heard in the two years is the call for not receiving a cost of living increase or any kind of a compensation whatsoever. Am I correct in understanding that? That this, it's been years since any cost of living increase or anything?
It's twenty fifteen.
So from a, I'm all about communications. My background is marketing communications. I'm all about internal, uh, communications and external communication. Who on keeps saying that people don't know what's going on? Part of what the city can look into, and a lot of it's word of mouth, a lot of it's working with community planning, is doing projects that people actually lead going on. I don't know what happened to the, uh, having a place where people can go and check out equipment.
The tool shed.
The tool shed?
Yeah.
You'd see people doing that, that people just need to see things happening from a community level. But the main thing to keep in mind is it's not just important to consider that there's a budget we have to meet. There's also the physical morale that you need to, uh, go ahead and feed or enrich for the staff or the employees to have a healthy working environment. All of us will work our butts off. All of us will give a hundred and ten percent. You'll hear the story where I've got one person who does the work with three people. Well, I've got stories here where I hear one person doesn't even want to work, you know? Because they don't have the motivation, they don't feel the support. And some of that is verbal, good job, baby for doing it. City manager shaking hands, going out of his way to to, you know, talk to the staff, employees from the bottom up. And we try to do that, but we need more of that from all concerned as well as to really consider, it's not just about money and meeting budget. It's about a healthy working environment. And I understand that maybe in six months, when the, uh, taxes start growing in from the new annexation and realities of what we really have coming in, maybe there could be an amendment to the budget. We can help out EMS and county. But right now, the justification should be to the citizens and those who complain in the county, when you don't have the neighbors that say, how can you give raises or whatever? Your reply back from a marketing communications standpoint is quite justified to say, there hasn't been one in, um, ten years. There hasn't been any of that. And we have people who work hard, and it's time that we fight for our staff. It's time to show support where it's needed. And you're guys gonna have to take the hit as far as complaints, but you're gonna get a lot back in return. So I just want to have you consider that option.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I said my say.
Thank you. Josie?
Okay, if I'm of this, the the hardest, the hardest thing about all of this is to get those things out of the community. But you can count on the fact that I always let them know how hard the city is working, always. And I bring up projects that they're done. Sometimes I talk for two or three hours with one person because they just don't realize. And they need to realize. So, you know, we ought to come in that, I am coming back, I work, you are, any time that I'm planning. It's getting to a point where I don't even go out to eat anymore because everybody else.
Yeah.
I understand that. I understand what you're saying, and maybe it's not like we we said no to anything. We just got there a way to get this done eventually.
I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't not considered. That it's just as important to keep the morale of the employees you have and reward them, especially if they haven't received even cost of living increases. For how many years has it been since the city of Pearsall employees received a cost of living increase? Not, no, not a raise, just, I mean, anywhere else most people work, it's standard to get a cost of living increase. And I don't think the city's had one for its employees. I don't know, I I'm saying it's over four or five years.
Three.
Three?
Twenty fifteen was the last raise that was given.
Okay, I think you're justified in being able to have that as a, uh, except with the understanding that in six months, we'll have access to some, you know, tax dollars, other things to reconsider and hire those extra employees, help out the police department. But I'm also, you know, I'm all for, you know, incremental step-ups, at least start somewhere. But again, if you start there, I I can just hear the morale, knowing while they got it, we didn't. And we don't want to have that going on. Why them, not us? It's just food for thought.
Mm-hmm, thank you, ma'am.
Um, actually, I want to say I'm grateful that you said that because that's gonna be my topic. I have three in the back, two in the front. And I don't know if y'all noticed, but Miss B has been out and she had surgery. So we've been trying to pick up all the slack in the front. Um, and it makes it hard with the girls in back not knowing exactly what to do in the front. Um, we're trying to figure out a schedule of how to not have the doors closed during rush time. Also, people come during rush time, but that only needs one person in the front. Um, there has been shortages where our employees have been having to take out pockets to cover what they're short of because they're not properly trained. So there is a lot that gets taken out, um, on top of all the complaints and stuff that they have to, um, hear every day on the databases, the lines are long, the lines are long inside. Um, we have the clerk, uh, up here at the front every day by herself whenever she was here. Now that people are now, um, trying to help out, we're starting to understand what the workload was up there. When she was up there by herself. And, uh, we had her up there for a year. We had a cut one of that that position. It doesn't look like she's not gonna be coming back till the beginning of the next fiscal year. So that's what the changes that we've been doing. And we even have Mr. Frost up there. So everybody's like, well, where where did you come from? So it has been a change for us. Um, so, yeah, the animosity in the workplace has been pointing time with the the separation of, okay, parks upwards giving this, but the clerks at the front not getting anything whenever they're trying to call the complaints and, you know?
And you have bilingual employees.
Uh, we do have bilingual. Okay, so let me tell you the situation that usually happens. Um, people come in, they want to talk about their their bills. Usually I try and help out because I don't like them screaming at my employees. So I bring them aside, and they come to find out I don't speak French. So then I have to go and tell them, Miss B, can you translate for me? Because they don't want to hear it from me. So then it takes her away from the window to help try and tell the customer exactly how to how to explain bills and how everything takes into account. So there, and these girls do not get ready. There's none of them get ready, and they use it on a daily basis. And the same thing with Mr. Frost, though, I mean, H R getting calls and everything. He's H R, knowing all these stipends, he doesn't get any. So there, it it's it's a lot of inconsistencies, and the employees don't know about it. So having only certain departments, um, you said public service, only those that are doing, um, public service to the community, we are public servants. We all do it, we all do it. So, I mean, I just, it it's hard, it is a hard decision, I know. Finances are very, very, very slim, but the morale of the workplace is very, very important. And at the break, we're going, it's, we have to live it every day. We have to see our employees not be happy, you know, struggle coming into work and tension in the workplace, and it it's not healthy. We don't need, people up here are being stressed out because they're gonna be short, have to come out of pocket, and they're not even getting paid at a good, good level. So you see it from what's out there, there's also inside here.
And I mean, and that's what we are talking about. Trying to make things work by striking a balance between the needs that y'all described as department chairs and such. And, uh, of course, trying to bring some people up and presentualizing to this T N L survey, salary survey. Um, but it it just can't all be done right now. But I think if we maybe work towards a basing plan that's gonna help people, give people hope that, hey, this is coming, it's just everybody's not here, you know? That might help. And I understand y'all are just short up in front, you know, when I come to pay my bill, it's pretty busy. But my point that I made earlier was that when we make the cuts, we we also talked about as soon as we get some money here, we're gonna try to replace those positions because those are vital to the essentiality of the service. But, you know, it's, it's, it's vital. Police is vital, policeman's vital, it's always a clerk here, so a couple of street workers. So everybody's life, it has to be a part of a bigger picture to to get everything done. Maybe not right now, but eventually work towards things. So striking a balance between the raising some salaries and then and then hiring some people where it's absolutely necessary and focusing on on the issues that the community brings forth. You know, the the number one thing we hear about is is the streets, of course, but there's other areas that need attention at the moment. And there is work, everyone, and we appreciate everything that everyone does. You know, the the city cannot function without finance department, cannot function without parks, cannot function without places, so cannot function. We're actually doing a whole lot more now than the city's ever done before. We 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 have, uh, Main Street, we have the economic development, we have the tourism, we have other things that have never been done in this town. But we are moving forward. It's just that everything's kind of catching up with the tourists right now, so.
So if we did not do the eighty eighty and gave every employee a hundred dollars a month raise, how much would that be versus what we've already budgeted in? And then that way, we are taking care of what we have already. And then, of course, we have to revamp the bilingual stipends and differentials, whatever. We have to revamp that as well. But, um, how much would that be? And then?
Hundred dollars a month.
Seven.
Yeah, thirteen, another, okay.
Does that, does that bring equity into this?
All the employees, yeah.
Right, so these sixty six employees times twelve hundred dollars, shit, it's a hundred dollars a month. That'd be twelve hundred dollars a year. Um, times sixty six would be seventy nine, twenty plus, also total insurance, nine. Probably another eight thousand on top, that's to cover difference in retirement, insurance, taxes, that's us. So you're probably talking about somewhere, somewhere between five and nine dollars.
Gary, that that doesn't address any inequities. It doesn't address.
It doesn't address inequities, but it does give some playing fields. I mean, everybody's getting an increase, you know? I know it doesn't address that. We have to do that later. Um, you know, I'm not sure how to do that, but if you, you just can't pick a few people and give them a raise. You can't do that. It, you're gonna, the morale of the rest is just gonna go down. So either we do it for all or we do it for none.
We saw a couple of directors, I mean, scientists, because we need to talk about the scientists. And we got some stuff to show you on that, too.
Okay.
We still have, I saw Crystal, who else? Are you the last one, Crystal? Why don't you go real quick since you're a one man show?
Um, do you guys have any questions? Something to partner my budget, anything?
Well.
What what do you have to say?
Um, I did make some, took some money out of some of my items to help out with the budget. Um, but I did increase, the one increase that I did do significantly was gonna be elections. Um, only because we wanted to do something different this year with election day. So maybe contract outside of the city. day, so maybe contract outside of the city. Someone that's not from here for election day, because I know we have some issues on election day. Um, but as far as me...
No.
Here, I'm sorry. Um, but as far as the...
We're missing something.
You're here, it's just being fit. So that was the one thing that we did use, that way I can look, possibly try to get back to help out with that election day.
Which one's help?
This, this is the second thing, I don't, it's...
Oh, that's totally different. Mine is given from seventeen, seventeen thousand five hundred, I go to fifteen hundred or nineteen, you know? Um, that helps to see if we can contract with someone to pay them a little bit more to come in and do some things that makes me feel good.
Good question. Do you have any estimates or quotes or anything for what that's going to cost?
Um, right now, what I, what I paid out Mr. Cuellans, it was no more than a thousand, um, so that's why I wanted to bump it up to fifteen hundred. And also, we have to compete with, um, the ISB, whenever they do, they almost owe one of my clerks. They got the account from there, so I got to keep them. I have to compete with them, or the election clerks and the workers and stuff like that, so that's why I have to, I tried to bump it up, I think it was like a ten dollars when I got here for something, and I bumped it up to eleven, twelve. Um, and I think it was, uh, fifteen dollars for Mr. Cuellans for the, um, election day judge, and I bumped it up to seventeen to help keep him at bay.
Yeah.
Um, because again, that's not his primary job, but he's done it for so long to try to keep him, so that way it also...
I will say that this, she does have to pay more than what the county has to pay in order to keep that, that is, dealing with county elections on your front, primaries and everything, um, the, I believe the election judge is only paying ten, and he doesn't come back, so it, it, it's harder, but they, they have, it's a bigger election, it's a lot of, um, bigger pool to pool.
And that's the first question they asked, do you want to be an election clerk, are you interested in Mr. Cuellans, what do you think of that?
Yeah, and if I'm not wrong, correct, you get no reimbursement from the Secretary of State for that, right?
No.
Right, that's the difference also. The county gets reimbursed eight dollars an hour from the Secretary of State. So that's a costly, this, the, the cost, we're eating a hundred percent of the cost.
And then from what I understand, he also fronts, like, the Democratic or Republican party for the ballots or something like that, and they reimburse them.
Yes.
Yeah, and he says something along those lines.
Yes.
Um, so that's the one significant change that I did make. Postage expense, I didn't know that was split in the postages, and so, um, twenty fifteen, when I got here, I was already had the admin, edit cabinet department. Last year was the first one I had in my department, now I'm blind, I have everything. Um, so postage for many elections, the letters are going to go out, everything that we send out, um, I increased that. But as far off, as far as the stipends and the, the plan and everything like that, I piggyback off of, um, Ms. Cleo and Josie as well, it's in cans in here at times. It really, really is. Um, whereas we have guys that come in and they're like, oh, this person's just saying something, yelling at me, um, you know, I try to handle it, I just took off, because they're cussing at me, they're, we're here, we have to stand here and take it. The girls up here are, you can scream that, I've been on the phone for twenty minutes , told someone up here in the private cell, so much, store clerk has to come out and help, she's part of the staff, she works two days a week. These are the girls now rotate two days a week, where they have to drop their duties back here, up here, and then come up here, and it will juggle with whatever, everything else they have to do. So it's really hard in here, you know? The guys out there, they kick butt, wherever guys, they kick butt. They do deserve some type of increase, because it's, it's hard, they have to support families, and we're all living paycheck to paycheck, all of us, guarantee you. It's, it's not easy, but I understand the situation that you guys are in, you guys have a hard discipline, so.
And Chris, Crystal, don't forget, you had an employee cut during the last time, so if you, if we had money rolling in, what, what is it you need?
I'm a, I'm a representative officer who, the previously, Amy didn't have one, I believe, when Josie Gonzalez came into play, she wanted one. So they gave her an R M O, to handle all the, um, files and everything like that. I now handle it myself. So every request that comes through, every single one, it can, I can have ten on my desk at one time, and I'm dispersing and handling, handling and redacting everything that needs to be redacted, everything's on my plate. This guy right here, get in my office right now, we got to do this, okay? Drop what I'm doing, come over here, do this. Josie, hey, I need this, run to the back, go get the, go back and do a team, I need this, if I can help up here, I'll do it. It's, it's long.
Thank you.
So, tour visit with Mr. Frost.
Okay.
Obviously, he's a one-man show, um, his budget is pretty much straightforward, the only thing that really changes in his budget during the year is our pre-employment, during the screen to physicals, the more people we go through, the more costs, we've had to add a little bit of money to that, um, over the, over this last couple of years. And then the library with Mr. McRavel, um, I mean, that's a pretty, pretty normal shift, but it doesn't change very much. I would have to increase a little bit for utilities, a few things like that, but it doesn't really, even really change very much, honestly, it's pretty consistent. Um, so I want to go through, I put this together this afternoon, Jos and I talked about this a little bit in the cycle for the meeting, uh, you guys all have a copy of this up there really, and Chris, do you have a copy?
Yes.
Okay, so you all have a copy of it. Uh, this is the stipend program, uh, it's front and back, so, a, a little bit of background on this, this is included in the twenty fifteen budget, it was, it was a, a piece of budget, um, it was not passed as a permanent issue, um, it was passed as part of that budget, um, to be in accord with that budget, um, it got carried forward, and it's been carried forward ever since, you know, it, it just got carried forward in the salary part of the budget every year. Uh, there's a number of classes of, of stipends in reference, I just, I kind of want to go through some of them really quick and talk about, about where, what, what they, how they've been, um, how they've been used to this point. Uh, so the code A was a shift differential, and that was twenty dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, uh, if you were working outside of a normal shift. Uh, that shift differential has only been paid to the P D since it's been put in. Uh, violation stipend was twenty dollars, uh, also twenty-five cents an hour, however you look at it, only paid to the P D since it's been put in. We've got three levels of certification there, from the T E C O certification, intermediate advanced and master, uh, either at thirty dollars per pay period, sixty dollars or eighty dollars per pay period, you get only paid for P D. Uh, the K nine stipend I actually put in, uh, when we started with the dogs, because most people were having to pay for dog food, they're having to pay for medical expenses for the dog and that kind of stuff, so I've not put it since I've been here. And we, and that was based on, on what everybody else provides for that stipend, who daily care for little dogs. Uh, the next two, the merit evaluations, there was two of them were put in place in that twenty fifteen, uh, budget, uh, would have been the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen budget. Uh, there was one for a, a score on annual evaluation of between eighty and eighty-nine points, and there was, it was just twenty dollars or, or an extra twenty-five cents an hour for that, for that budget. There was another one, if you scored between ninety and a hundred, and that was thirty dollars an hour. Uh, what I've found since then is that there were people that they refused to evaluate, um, and they're digging the values, so they wouldn't get the stipend, so we'll select people that were reevaluated and given a stipend. Uh, the next three are years of service, I've never really understood why, I understand why it happened, but I don't want to say it. Uh, but if you look at there, there's a year of service stipend that is for, if you've been here between five and ten years, and you get fifty dollars per paycheck for that. If you've been here between eleven and twenty, you get seventy-five, if you've been here over twenty years, you get twenty-five dollars. It's absolutely, well, I, I don't like it, too, um, because there, there are certain people in that eleven to twenty group that they have to try to make sure not to let in. Uh, we have a stipend for a heavy equipment operator, that's one that's available to our Public Works Department. Uh, we have a stipend for an assistant city clerk, where as far, we're, we're required to have somebody appointed as an assistant city clerk, so the city clerk is out for the day, they can take official files or do whatever, um, but anything that comes in has to be served by the clerk. Now, there was another one that was certification in field, um, I guess that was just like a catch-all, where they could give somebody, someone if they wanted to. Uh, it was forty dollars per pay period. There's another, it was a no republic, uh, when I got here, I had seventeen no republics, I got rid of that. We're down to, uh, we, we assign no republic responsibilities to positions that were necessary to have them, and we cut all of our stuff. Uh, and then we give one for the, the volunteer fire department, uh, that was started, that actually was a part of the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, kind of, it was put in before I got here, uh, and it was eighty dollars per pay period for anybody that's an employee that volunteers at the volunteer fire department, I think it was done at that time to try to boost the number of people that have the volunteer fire department, because it never got qualified, uh, was why that was put in place at the time of the end. So again, um, you know, the majority of the, of the, of these were not applied across the board, uh, they've not been applied across the board since they were put into place, they were given, some people not given, so if this is something that the council wants to continue, that cost right there for years, about fifty-four thousand dollars a year would have cost a bunch, um, that's attached to the salary here attached. Um, so what we looked at this afternoon, and I have, and I have some questions, uh, obviously, on some of these. Uh, one, if that skill was, uh, skill that should be, that requires the essential functions of the position, um, one, it is in the job description, if it is, then why are we paying for it? Two, if it's not in the job description and it should be, then we need to change our job descriptions and need to equip the job script. Um, the second one there is, is who paid for the certification, if the taxpayers paid for the training, then should the employee be getting an additional pay stipend on top of that after the training's done, or should we be required contractor making them stay for a period of time afterwards to pay back the taxpayers for the certification? Because the reality isn't the taxpayers paid for it, once they give it, that employee's working somewhere else, so they can easily leave and go get the money somewhere else, that's why you do the contracts to make them stay. And then three was the stipend that, that rule across the field for all the employees that have to turn tonight, you know, a lot of them. So, on the back page, if you flip it over, there is a thought, that's all it is, is a thought of how they can be done equally across the board. Uh, the shift differential, if we're going to keep the shift differential in, but that shift differential should be applied to everybody that works outside of our working hours. If police crews get called out in the middle of the night to go fix the water line, they should get it, too. Uh, the gas department is called out to go fix the gas line, they should be getting it, too. The dog department is called out to do something, they should be getting that during that time that they're out of work, too. So rather than doing it as a, as an amount for pay period, they should get an amount for out. And the way it was before is twenty dollars a pay period, which you pointed to twenty-five cents an hour, so if somebody gets called out during non-normal hours, they should get an extra twenty-five cents an hour, um, to, to cover that cost. So that'd be an easy way to keep that one. Uh, the years of service, those could be left in with the graduation scale being right, so if you've been here five to ten years, you'd get twenty-five dollars, if you've been here eleven to twenty, you would get fifty, and if you've been here over twenty, then you'd be seventy-five, instead of backwards. Um, that's something that's pretty easy to track because we've got average rates, um, so when you get the average rate for a five-year, a year, a year eleven year, or your twenty-first year, it will just kick in at that time, so it's a big, well, one time pay rate for five years, it would be pretty easy to get. Uh, merit evaluations, I kind of left them at the same level. Uh, I think merit evaluation increases are important, I mean, that's, that's the normal way that you operate, is to put a merit evaluation, if you're good, you get more money, if you don't do good, you don't, that's why it's supposed to be. Uh, they're both up there at a score of eighty to eighty-nine, ninety to a hundred, uh, with requirements, where they have, you have to establish the requirements that they have to be given. Um, the volunteer fire department, I still have that one, that one up there, um, there's a couple of things with that, that kind of bothered me about the way we did it, though. One is if the employees get called out in their working hours, they continue to get paid, that's why we think we'd set them, they wouldn't have to get off the pocket or fight for it, to make sure we have enough people responding, our response times are quicker, and we're making sure that we get, um, that, that all that response time would be really longer, and also our ISL was, and also everybody's paying more for their provision. Uh, so more people you have, the quicker response times are going to be, the cheaper employees' house insurance is, after you jump in the hiring place, holding office. The second part is, is our employees get that stipend, but they are not eligible for the, uh, the bonus, that they're going to do here, so that comes off. So they're still having to contend these outside work time, you know, they're, they're not going to go to fires outside of work time because they don't make so many fires, they don't, they're not in active posture. Uh, so they're still having to meet other requirements away from work, um, as part. So I, it's kind of, you know, I kind of go back and forth on both, just, uh...
How many do we have then?
Right, oh, we see we have five. Um, the assistant city clerk, because of five requirements, that one would have to stay in. Uh, one that we don't have, that has been kind of important lately, is we don't have a stipend for an interim director. So if we have a director, we're going to have to put somebody in that spot, um, to, to fill that hole, so we get a bill, or so we actually have a budget to do it, or whatever. Uh, we don't have a stipend that applies for somebody to be put into an interim director's spot and do that job, um, so we have the interim director for the, for the, for the area, but we don't need any more money to do that. So I added a hundred dollars per pay period in there, that's fifty dollars, we pretty slim, around, decisions for the, uh, that's the kind of K nine statement, K nine...
Can you back up, what do you mean by interim director, these types?
Public Works Director quits, that's somebody who's a job.
Right, but wouldn't you pay the salary?
No, because they're still, they, they don't make it, their position to be interim.
Oh, it's still on?
Yeah, they're still in the, yeah, it's just, it's that stopgap between the time that somebody quits and we hire somebody to fill the hole.
Somebody's carrying it, probably.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, so it's just a little bit extra because now they don't make decisions, that's a phone drink on the board, you know, and those kind of things, so there's a little bit extra to cover all that. Uh, we got the, I, I left the heavy equipment operator up there on that top, on that top row, or on that top ledge, and so the division line there is what we had before, that I think that's applied across the board, is equitable, it's fair, um, and it's something that everybody should look at. Uh, the liability stipend, that, that, that one down below, that's applied across the board, it was up to the top shelf, uh, but we have to come up with a way that we certify somebody to be liability stipend. Uh, so that's what we can easily do, does that top layer, and then it's going to apply across the board, and everybody can do that.
Does T M L or another organization have certification for that?
I don't know. My T M L doesn't do a lot of certifications, I don't think so.
Well, what certification do these have to go?
We have a, it's a three-day course, there's state conditions, the way that officers are basically having.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four hours for their P D license.
Twenty-four hours, I mean...
Three days of classroom.
Three days of classroom.
And a state, and a state exam.
In Spanish.
Is that exam, is that open to non-P D, or is that specifically for?
It's for non-universities, yeah, for other readers, J R's, it's all free. It's almost swimming through the local branch of community college or something, that's called, it's something better, particularly using certification. It also, we've got a similar work test, earlier, our work test.
That's, that's what you do on a job.
Yeah, it doesn't have, it doesn't have...
Yeah, if, if it's not standardized somehow, it can become subjective, because some of these statements are subjective, like the merit evaluation, that's subjective, you know, it depends through your bosses, and how they're longingly employed. It couldn't, it doesn't mean you have to, it could. So I'm looking at these statements, and, you know, the ones that are objective, can be measured, and there's no subjectivity involved, uh, those, those I think, uh, merit is staying, but, I think it's subjective.
Well, there are, so, so on merit evaluations, it depends on how you structure your evaluation. Uh, if you put, if you put criteria in that says, you're a score of sixty points, this has to happen, that they have to provide that documentation, that it shows that, I did, I did the merit evaluation for the state of New Mexico by that close to the county one I was there, and it, there, there was a five-point picture once there, and to score a five, it was very, very particular, you had to bring national recognition to the state, you had to bring national recognition to the county. So in that bill, if they got a five, they're going to have to say, this person was recognized through this program, and the county won this award because of what they did. So without that, you couldn't get a five, that's not subjective, they didn't win the award, they did something, or they didn't do something. Uh, then four is that this is what you have to have for four, and three, this is what you have to have for three, and they had to provide identification, and they're, they did, they did, they just ran here, that they were lucky to score. But so, it depends on how you structure, if you're just going to say, say he does a good job, yeah, that's, that's very, okay, but he does a good job, he answered, he did this many work hours per week, or this work hour per week, whatever, I mean, you could come up with a way to qualify, maybe a little bit easier. But, I mean, that, it's, and again, these are, these are there for that, for the conversation, this stipend is something that maybe you're not...
So if we were to implement this, how much, how much are we going to get?
Well, so if you, if you go on a years of service and merit evaluations alone, if they're applied across the board, it's a hundred thousand dollars. That tells you how inappropriate they were like. Uh, now, the ones that are more, that are more stringent are down here on the bottom, and rather than just happy, where if you're a certified police officer, you get more money than everybody else that's certified and doesn't, or student classification certificate... of certification in the state of Texas. The first one is, is it through a regulatory agency? So we have a level two, three, and four for regulatory agencies. So if it's through T col, T C Q, Texas Civil Commission, something where you're getting certification through them, then they should all apply the same. We're never going to have our guys in the waste money, we can save fifty thousand dollars a year if that's somebody's waste of our treatment plan, opportunity to see this and get certified as a class B operating facility, because we wouldn't have to hire contractors. Right now, there's no incentive for them to do it, because if they get it, there's no extra pay for it. So we're paying contractor, we want to sign off on our documents because we have no incentive for our employees over there to actually go get that certification itself. Same thing with the relevant commission for the gas department, there's no incentive for the certifications for those guys in the gas department built in this. But there's still a certification that's issued by a regulatory agency, so it should carry the same weight. To me, it's a whole lot more important that we have somebody on staff that's a class B or a class A operator for the waste park plan than it is that we have a master piece officer. Because with that, that gets rid of a lot of the liability that we have in T C Q having that person's staff. So instead, we spend thousands of dollars a year paying for a contractor because we never give any incentives to employees here to step up and go get those certifications that stay here. Because when they get those certifications, they're gone because they can make a lot more money someplace else than they can make here with those certifications.
Is there certification for city clerks and?
There is, so that goes, that goes down to the second one. And the second one we have, it's a professional certification. So there's a professional group, a T M L group, or some group like that that provides the certification, it's a lower paid, a lower paid type certification, so that's right. That's why the bottom's broken down into two different levels. Those kinds of sightings then, that encourage this staff, rather than saying only, you're getting extra fifteen bucks if you're a no republic, so I fill out a form, the city pays for it, and I get fifty-four dollars a pay period, that's why I need one. This kind of stuff, they have to put the work into it, and they have to learn what they need to learn, and they get the certification, and they have to maintain it as well. So that's why that kind of stuff is added at the bottom. Now we can be adventurous across the board. Anybody that goes against a certification, if it's a professional certification or a regulatory certification, they're all going to have the same opportunity to make more money.
I actually kind of like this because it brings up the, the quality of the employee. I mean, you know, they try to get themselves educated and, you know, give out everything themselves, and in turn, it's give out for the committee as well.
Now, I mean, that's it. You know, that's something you guys need to think about as we're looking through this whole process, because it's, it's not funded, it's not funded, right? There is no stipend for funding that, right? Because there was, there's not, that was part of single budgets that expired. So if you guys want to redo them, then they got to reauthorize this later.
Question on that, how do we make this perpetual thing not have to redo it in every single budget?
We do by work as a set of.
By work as?
Yep. And actually, what it should be, is it should be built into the personnel policy as part of the pay, with the pay plan, with whatever pay plan you have as your base for your pay plan, and this, that, all's supposed to be part of your personnel policy, which is the top of my question. But it could be implemented as part of the budget for this year, and that gives us a year for the work and stuff to get all the rest of the stuff done together. Get it placed in place for that, that term.
Teak, you have a figure for the whole thing on this proposal?
I know, we just said this this afternoon, because I started thinking about it, it's like, so we're ready to put together.
Just the top part of that.
What we'll do is, we'll actually come up with a, a lot of, an amount for each one based on what we have. And why have that money?
Sir, would it be for no void on the year?
Yeah, all they know, the existing staff, the code of the. Yeah, yeah, because what's in there right now is not authorized unless they reauthorize the same stipend, stipend part of the budget. So it would be, it would be starting out basically.
But to be clear, the fifty-four thousand is not even in that budget?
Right. That fifty-four thousand was included in the votes in my share, but it's not included in the vote position because of what I'm telling you. Because it was not a part of the budget instead of as ours.
Now, as far as the evaluations are done, you know, what evaluation, the company evaluation or previous evaluation?
So evaluation should be done on that anniversary date, and I would say if you're going to do it, it would be prospective to the evaluations done during the fiscal, during the fiscal year. It would be a positive evaluation.
Do you have deadlines like for the evaluation stuff?
Well, again, they're normally based on anniversary dates because.
Whenever they start.
As I said, you get an interim, so log in, you get an annual at the end of your time. You know, they kind of get, love to get, a lot of people have time to do them, so some get it a little bit late, some get it a little bit early, but, you know, it's, it's a matter of time. But those two, you guys sit down, talk to the employee, and it takes a little bit of time to go right.
So like, how all the supervisors and stuff that are here, are they getting paid for being here at these meetings?
Minimum, minimum of forty hours a week if you're on salary. Fire's on schedule.
I don't get paid either.
And that's what I was going to say, I mean, these are some really hard decisions that we're having to make and we don't get paid. I mean, and we're not, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I mean, I'm here because I want the best for the city, but yet we get all kinds of criticisms as, as well, so.
Well, you're not welcome.
You're not welcome.
I get it every day.
Yeah, you go to H E V.
We all need to hang with me. Because I really don't. No, I, I got church and I don't.
You've heard from everybody, everything, everything that we've got, everybody knows that's a thousand issues in our work and floor. Monday is our first budget hearing, I guess, for lack of a better word, the first time we're going to be approved, that happened after Monday. But if we're going to look at, if you guys want to look at something different, I'd be nice to know how and not looking. So we can try to get something put together to discuss on Monday, and not just come back with what we got.
I mean, I think from what we've been saying, I like to see us strike a balance between the different needs and wants and. He's talking this over, and I don't know where the point at, maybe to go, you know, it's not a very far, but we strike a balance between some of that and kind of have a present plan as we get more money, we're going to keep facing some stuff then that may help us to get started at least. Hi, Mr. Mayor. So Teak, really what we're talking about is hundred eighty-five thousand, that's what we got to play with, okay? But we're, I mean, we kind of need a figure for the insurance, so.
And we'll have the money.
So we use six, what do we use, six hundred thousand?
Four.
No, that's the EMS. What, what, didn't we use a figure in there, a figure in there?
Four.
Insurance.
Yeah, the current rate.
Which is five hundred thousand?
No, it's, uh.
Five hundred, you know.
Three hundred.
So that, that figures. That figure's in there, and is that a good baseline, or is there a chance that could go up?
There's a chance it could go up.
How much?
The baseline that we used was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred seventy dollars. That was, that was what our rate was this year, so that's most built in.
And that, that's, that's gone?
That, well, that's already in there. So if we got an RFP, that was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for recovery. So between the three eighty-nine and the eighteen thousand that's left, or we got about four, nine, nine, four, oh, seven room for insurance without anything else changed, then that'd be a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and eight twelve areas in the other.
Did anybody pick up a packet?
Yeah, yeah, we just had two that we picked up, yeah.
And when will we, will we get that before we try?
I think the deadline to file was Monday at three, I think it was three o'clock or four o'clock.
So you'll have, you'll have a figure when we meet Monday?
We should.
What was it, a paper? Because I didn't see it.
I had, I looked at the paper yet this week.
It was last week.
It was on the website, and he, I know it was on.
On the website?
Yeah, it was on the website. And it was, he called, everybody who had called us before and had made an inquiry, he called all that back, so, and I don't, it wasn't, I'm sure, sure you told me. I'll double check, I'll double check.
Well, just, just, just to walk it through, so let's just, the assumption is the insurance is going to be okay with our carryover, just, that's an assumption. So if, I know it's a dangerous assumption, but.
Oh, that's the whole, outside.
Right, right, right. So, so we got a hundred eighty-five thousand, if we, if we keep minimum stipends, which are not exactly applicable across the board, that's fifty-four thousand, without doubt.
If you kept what's there right now.
Right, right, that's fifty-four thousand. If we change it, that's a hundred thousand, that means we got eighty-five thousand to hire new employees and make raises that, I mean, written it. You're right. How do you, how do you, how do you figure that out?
I'm really interested in seeing what our numbers are with this plan, because when you start applying this across the board, you do start bringing in some of that equity we've been talking about, and you're bringing in some raises for some people who have not been getting stipends that they are now qualified for. I'm very interested to see what other numbers are going to look like, whether that's going to be falling inside that hundred eighty-five thousand, running above it.
Well, if that, and that's eighty-five, realistically, if that, that leaves us eighty-five thousand, and we need, we need two cops and we need five employees, and so how do we determine who gets what?
Yeah, if you got eighty-five thousand, that's already pretty high, you may be able to hire two people. This is what you're going to do.
Yeah, because they're forty-seven thousand a year.
Well, you're going to be able to hire two, but again, it's going to go back to if you decided you wanted to hire one in parks, you're not going to be able to hire that employee at thirteen or fourteen dollars an hour because you're going to have to catch up with all those other employees, you're going to have to like do that. That's part of the reason. And you get, that's the only way that we're going to get. But the eighty-eighty, forty-four out of sixty-six employees got raised, and so it would be across the board, it, it did the most for, for the most employees, I mean, that's.
So just to verbalize our variables, we've got stipends, we've got employee increases, and we've got salary increase, we've got employees to hire, those are the, I mean, is that correct? Is that, that's our variables? So can we give them some direction on what everybody's thinking? Not what we're thinking, I said, but just, we've got to get the insurance numbers, we got, we need to figure out what do you want to do with the stipends. I, I think if we cut out all the stipends, you know, we said earlier, no one's going to take a paid cut, well, if we cut out stipends, some people aren't going to take the cut, you know, and so, you know, we, we really can't cut that fifty-four out because we don't want to cut anybody's pay.
If the morale's down now, can you imagine it? Are we going to give up stipends?
We haven't heard from you about your input on the salary. I know you've done the differentials.
Yeah, I've talked about it a number of times, and like, my job as a city manager is to not have a favorite department. My job as a manager is to do the best I can for everybody that I can. So in looking at what the situation we were in, like, that's, that's why we're, you know, something we've talked about from day one, you know, and, and we have, we've added so many, so many new things we're doing, you know, we've added new people, we've added new programs, and we've done all this stuff to expand. I, my honest opinion when it comes to what people offer, I say to the people in this town, I don't see what we're doing, it's because they don't want to see what we're doing. That's the bottom line. They don't want to see what we're doing because they're either so adamant about, nothing's going to change because this way it's been for forever, or because they're tied to another group that doesn't want to see, doesn't want to admit what this council does. And I've talked about this in council meetings a number of times. So it doesn't matter, you put fifty more people out on the streets, they're still going to complain, because they don't care, that it's not about improvement, it's about them being able to say, oh, they don't, they're not doing anything, not doing anything. I, I am very worried about morale, because I, I talk all the time, I, I, I'm sure they're very nervous to sit in here and talk about some of the things they talk about because they're, they're trying to walk a fine line between not making me mad because they're trying to step over another director, or they're walking that line trying not to hurt their, their, the people that are helping them, the directors all work very closely together. And so something like this, that puts them in a bad spot too, because, I'll tell you this, I've said it in these, in these things for thirty years, I've never heard a director one time say, I got everything I need, never once hired. They always want more employees, they always need more money, and that's reality in the government. I'm not, I'm not saying that that's, that's true, we can always use more, we can always do more if you have more resources, we can always do more if we have more force. But I've never had a director say, I don't have, I'm done, just give me what you've got and I'll call people, because that was. You know, we, you know, talking about this earlier, we're facing, we face challenges, city and this building that the communities around us may face because of things we're done in the past, because businesses were run off, because law enforcement is away. We say, talk about it, it don't matter what's reality we have, and so we have to figure out how to work inside that reality, and how do we do the best we can with what we have? And, you know, and, yeah, we can do a ton more employees, I absolutely agree. I mean, I've, I've set up, I think we should have probably somewhere around a hundred and ten employees in the city for the city to function the way they should. We have to charge such a high tax rate, we never, I mean, everybody would be going, I'd be gone, you guys would be gone, or we'd all be gone if we tried to do that. I think one of the things that hurts us very bad is what happened during the oil boom, when there was all that extra money and all those extra people were hired. And so they thought, oh, look, they're doing something. Well, if we had three point five million dollars in sales tax, we'd be doing the same thing. We don't have it. We've got, we've got basically about half of it now, and we're trying to do what we can with what we have. So we're not going to, we're not going to go back to what we have, to what they had in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, because we don't have kind of, we don't have those kind of funds. I historically, in this job, have always seen, you know, we have some really good employees. You know, they're, they're a little bit disgruntled right now, so they haven't had a raise in three years. Sometimes, that disgruntled employee that's really good, that already knows how to do their job, giving them a little something, showing them, yeah, we do care about you, recognizing what's happening, that's better happening to more employees, because they just start being more productive, they know what to do, they know how to do it, and we don't have that training there. That's what they start to be most about, not doing the salary plan. As, as a manager, and these guys are, this, this is what's driving ramp rates right now, I guarantee you, you get that new person in, you spend your time training that one to do, that's taking away from him to do his job, and then three weeks later, they're gone, or three months later, they're gone, and you start all over again. That's what kills you as a city, as a government, period. All that training time is what kills you. We make a huge investment in employees' training, whether it's rep's time, whether it's Rudy's time, whether it's getting those basic, you know, the basic certifications, the drug tests, the pre-employment physicals, all those, Mr. Frazel's time getting all their cable with them, White House Department's time getting them in the system. And every time one of those walks off, it's not just a ten dollar an hour employee, we're losing, we're losing ten hours of airtime, we're losing ten hours of Bruton's time, we're losing all the time that Rudy or we have spent training them, it's all that cost that gets locked together. And the way, the quickest way to stop losing that big amount is to increase, is to probably get above to a competitive salary. Because it don't matter where you break in, if we're not competitive, I'm just saying, that works just to have that many more pre-employment drug screens we paid for that we're wasting, that many more, all that stuff, it's just, it's repetitive. It's, it's, it's like a cycle, it's that negative cycle that you can't figure out dealing with. You know, the, the, the work that was done on the salary plan, again, it was a baseline so we can start somewhere and show these guys that, okay, we got the baseline done now, and show these guys that, okay, we got the baseline done now, now we're going to look at the stipends, now we're going to look at, if you've been here this long, you're going to get a raise, you're going to get this, and you get these certifications. He gives them something to look forward to. I think we're going to go forward if we're here right now. It gives them something that's, okay, now, if I go do this, or I go do that, I'm actually going to be more, more, I can help my family out. It's where I can do this to make my life better and, and, and improve my quality of life. That gives them a reason to stay. Uh, because, you know, you've heard it's not, you know, these guys are out there, and, you know, they're, they're all there trying to help somebody with a broken water line or something, they're going to yell that phone line. Uh, you know, there's no appreciation for city employees, guarantee, top down, there's no appreciation anywhere, anywhere out there when we're out there working or doing something. It's always, you're not doing enough, you're not doing this, you're not doing that. It's very rare that they actually get praised. I, I get phone calls all the time complaining about employees. I'm very rare, very rare to get a phone call where they're actually saying, you know, this guy did a good job. But they're actually doing a good job every day. I mean, I see it, you see it. Um, it's just that mentality. So I've always been about taking care of who you have first and then worrying about the future. I mean, about future people after that. So that's, I think that's why I live the way I live. But you guys are the ones that have to make the decision. And so whatever you guys decide you want to do, that's what we're going to do.
That's what we do in life.
And you'll give me, you'll give me the direction on Monday, what you want to do, we'll put it in a budget, that will measure, that's my job. That's not my job to second guess it or to give that document or do anything else. It's my job to take that document you give me and run the city, and that's what I'll do.
Is it motion to adjourn?
I got, I got some ideas for a broken period now. I have a couple of ideas, we'll, we'll get that figured out, house wise, get that figured out. And then I'll, I'll put, I got a couple of other ideas based on things I heard tonight because there's not actual, we can't say you did this. And we'll, we'll throw some other stuff in there on Monday, over there.
I don't know.
That's all the word. I will make their way up a motion to adjourn.
Okay, for this, can I speak? For this project, yeah, we need to work things out a certain way. But I'd like to see a phase in plan for, I mean, what does it look like down the road? Because it's time, giving a few people some raises right now to catch them up to eighty percent versus three, whatever it is, it's not going to complete the work, right? Not going to get it all done. Some people are at a hundred percent, and some people are at ninety.
And some people are fifty.
Some people are fifty, right? According to a female survey. I'd like to see, how, how do you face, how do you face in that hundred if it's going to be possible one day? What are we looking at, are the numbers? If we can't do those on the ADA or a hundred percent share, I mean, how can we face it then? So that, it looks like. Because you, you'll, you'll talk about morale a lot, and it's not easily done to, to look at how they pay some of salaries. And something that's not mentioned necessarily, because it's understood, is that the salaries that our employees make are salaries plus benefit, minus the benefits, because benefits are big by city as well. So total salary, somebody who makes thirty-eight really is, it costs forty-seven, maybe forty-six to cut that employee. And that is not mentioned, uh, because that is, that is a total salary. And, and, and I know it probably works everywhere in most cities, but, you know, what I'm trying to say is, you know, to be competitive, it's going to cost a lot of money because salaries out there, those cities that you brought, uh, they're pretty hot. And I guess they, they also pay benefits as well.
Same, same, I've never talked to another city that doesn't pay same benefits.
So the salary plus the benefits, that puts our employees, or any state employee, at, at, at pretty good salaries.
There were a few differences, like, that, that, while you're looking very similar, retirement wise, we'll wait for everybody else. Uh, so that's, that's, that's another thing, that's one of the, the direct reasons lost that, the biggest reason we lost that critical was retirement. We're, we're at five one to one right now, we're going to six one to one in January, that was already approved because it's part of my contract. Uh, but literally, it's for seven to two more. And so you're looking at retiring at twenty-one percent of your salary versus retiring at ten or twelve percent. That is a huge difference in retirement. Um, and we are dealing at six two one. So they're, they're dealt, they're both getting dealt with in retirement, or we can put it in retirement. And that's paid for by the city, that too is the city, that's not the employees. So there, so, yeah, there are a lot of similarities, uh, when it comes to benefits and stuff, there are very different.
But I think what I'm referring to also is that, you know, in, in some workplaces, you get paid, you make a forty-six thousand dollar salary and you got to pay to the retirement system, you got to pay new medical insurance, you got to pay this, that, and that. So you're really, you're not making forty-six thousand, you're making thirty-six, you know? So when we say here, we're making forty-six, it's, it's.
In addition.
Also, that's a state home today, uh, other than what they're putting into their retirement system. Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I, okay, so what was the consensus? I mean, I thought the consensus was that there's no way we can do the ADA.
I've heard consensus like, I mean, I've heard ideas over here, and ideas over here, and that's what I'm saying.
No, 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 not much, I'm just, I'm just hoping to come up with, with some other ideas.
Direction.
Because, I mean, I believe that, that the consensus was that ADA wasn't going to be feasible. You guys were on the meeting?
No. Van was for the ADA, he's still on.
We're still in the workshop, so, and it is feasible, it is feasible, of course, to the budget.
So I, I, well, I said, I have some ideas to throw a couple of things up there for you guys to look at. Um, and I'll bring that on Monday, because of the workshop, you can't, oh, you can't. So I, I mean, I, I've heard across the board what people said, and so we'll sit down with that. And we'll, we'll, this kind of matches this, this kind of matches this, to give some other stuff to talk about on Monday. Everybody that shares comes over, they'll have a big time to talk about on Monday.
He's giving you options on Monday.
But then, then you summarized it earlier, four points of discussion, right? Well, the three, the variables are the salary increase, the employees, and, I mean, the insurance is there, but let's just, let's just assume, we'll know by next deal, but, but the variables are the salary increase, the new employees, and the stipends. That's, and, and so if, if we cut the stipends and no new employees, we can do the salary increase, ADA, we can do that. So it is feasible now, what if we clean that, that's. But if we cut the stipends and we're lowering some salaries.
Can't cut the stipends.
Yeah, yeah, and so, so, yeah, that's what we all got to look at and see. And if there, if there's a desire to hire employees, then certainly we got to figure out what we're going to do with stipends, what employees we hire, and, and then the ADA is out, really, because we don't have. If we look at striking a balance between those people that need to get bumped up a little bit and, um, the stipend plan. And I don't know about employees, I think that's a part that we'll be talking about. But, you know, phasing in some of these ideas, as many of us have. Madam Mayor? And this is a pleasure workshop, correct?
Yes.
Why don't we close asking for some divine guidance? Throw a.
Leo.
Yes, Alpha. It's a workshop, it's budget related.
Go for it.
All right. Well, we got thank you for this time together, and Lord God, with the council members too, you gave us some, Bryn, and Mary, and Richard, and, and Robert, and, and you, and myself, Father God, just thank you for the desire to work together and just seek a good solution for the city. Lord God, we look to our city administration, and thank you for our department heads and their candor this evening, and their desire to do the right thing for the city, Lord God. We just, uh, we just want to serve you and honor you, and we just pray that you show us the way, Father. We pray ahead, ahead of time, thanking you for what you're going to do for us, and we just pray for this next year. We pray for, uh, for, um, for revenue to come in and enable us to hire the people we need, and Father God, to just make this city shine. We just pray with blessing, to be honest, being with our police officers and our first responders, if they're out there, keeping us safe. And thank you for this pleasure of serving together. We pray this evening Jesus Christ or something.